Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call this Kaysville City Planning Commission Thursday, May 12th to order. Going to go ahead and start off with Agenda Number One, opening and approval of the minutes from the April 28, 2022 meeting. Any discussions amongst the commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Only favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Number Two. So before we start with Number Two, let me just say some things to the public. Just real quick, how many of you are here to discuss Agenda Number Two, which is the conditional use permit?
Yes.
The applicant is not here. He's home with sick family.
Not a problem.
So he won't be here.
Moving on to Number Three, real quick. How many are here to discuss Number Three, which is the rezone at 492 North Flint Street? Raise your hands. About four people. Okay, and then Number Four, I'm assuming the rest of you are here for the 602 South Angel Street. Is that correct? Okay, great. So the process will be that we'll start off with the staff briefing the commissioners on the agenda item. And the next step will be to allow commissioners to discuss. If the applicant is here, we usually will invite the applicant to come up, say a few words. We may have a dialogue back and forth. And then from there on, we'll turn it over to public comments. Because I think Number Four has a lot, we may be limiting it to three minutes, I believe. So do please keep your comments succinct. If you are following up somebody and you're going to agree with something they say, feel free to just say, hey, I agree with what Quan said. Having said that, I'd like to add a few additional comments. Again, we're not saying you can't make any comments, we're just, for the sake of time. And then after that, we'll close the public comments, and then the commissioners will decide and discuss and disposition that. Couple of things, several things that we can do, either bring it up for a vote, discuss it, we may table it, but we'll try to figure out what's in the best interest for the committee. That means both the applicant and anybody here willing or wishing to discuss about any of the agenda items. So having said that, let's move to Agenda Number Two, and I'll let staff handle that first.
Yeah, so I have this conditional use permit. So the applicant, Josh Beckstrom, like I mentioned earlier, is not here. He is home with a wife and family, sick with the COVID. So I asked him not to come, I thought it was probably best.
Actually, I would say, moving forward because of HIPAA, let's not say why.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, that's what he said. Anyway, applicant lives at 336 South Marie Circle, and he's wanting to do a home occupation from here. It will be, he's doing, building rock retaining walls. He's the only employee, and he's planning on working from eight to five, or as needed. And he has one truck with a flatbed trailer, which he will be using for his business. The trailer is usually stored on the job site or at his home. He is getting a concrete poured in his backyard in, well, in the next week, so that the trailer can be parked back there behind his fence, so that it won't be seen from the road. He currently is living in an R-120 zone, and staff is suggesting or recommending approval for this home occupation permit and the conditional use permit to go with it. So if you have any questions, I will try and answer them, or he is home by the phone and is willing to take a call, if we need to call a friend, or if there's anything I can try and answer for you in his behalf.
So, common questions, of course, with something like this, will he have any materials stored on site, any equipment other than the trailer, any deliveries, what else? Employees, only one, I guess, you already answered that one.
Yeah, he's the only employee. All materials, everything will be delivered to the site that they're working at. So there won't be any Bobcats, there won't be any Backhoes, there won't be anything that will be coming to the home. It'll just be his truck and his trailer, as a single employee.
So I guess for the commissioner, at least in my mind, the only thing that's going to look different from, you know, a purely residential use neighbor of his is the trailer, and even that isn't necessarily totally different. And that's going to be behind the fence, once he's done, right?
Yeah, and he's pouring the concrete specifically for that.
Yeah.
Put it back there.
I do believe that we have a city code that already dictates what you can and cannot have anyhow. Again, anybody here wanting to discuss this? Again, the home occupation permit. Anybody in the public? Okay. Going back to the commissioners.
I'll make a motion, if we want to go for it. So, I suppose this is a two-parter. Do we have to make a motion to approve the home occupation?
Just the conditional use.
Okay. So then I make a motion that we approve a conditional use permit for IDK contracting at 336 South Marie Circle. And based on the staff report and the discussion that we had, to me, there does not need to be any other conditions beyond what's already in the code. So that's my motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll start off with a vote. Josh?
Aye.
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 Okay. That is Agenda Number Two. Moving on to Agenda Number Three, this is the public hearing for the rezone application from Monet Corporation, 492 North Flint Street, from RA Agricultural Residential District to Light Industrial. Staff?
All right, this property is located at 492 North Flint Street. The property is a little over one acre. It is currently vacant and not developed. There was a home on there previously, but that home was recently demolished. Current density entitlement under the residential zoning would be two single-family dwellings. It's requested to go to the LI or the Light Industrial zoning. I put NA on the density entitlement, although it should be noted that with a Light Industrial overlay, mixed use, there could be the possibility of residential in with the Light Industrial. But that would have to be done through a development agreement with the city council, and the applicant was not anticipating that, to my knowledge. Just want to go through a few slides here to show the location of the property. This is just kind of an aerial view of the property. You can see it does back up to the Kaysville Business Park there on the east side, and it's just north of the Smiths over on Flint Street. The zoning map shows LI to the east, RA is directly across the street and south of the property. There's some A1 property there in the neighborhood as well. I just want to explain briefly to the commission and the public some differences between the RA and the LI zone. RA is a residential zone, so we do have a minimum lot size requirement, which is 21,780 square feet. There's no minimum lot requirement on an LI lot. Again, going back to the base, or the density is a term we use when we're talking about residential properties, not really in the equation with the Light Industrial use. There is a difference in height allowances between the two zones. RA allows for buildings up to 30 feet in height, and the LI zone allows 35 feet. If the applicant is wanting to go taller than 35 feet, which would be adequate for three stories, they would need to come to the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit. The front setbacks, there is a difference there. There's 30 feet in the residential zone. There's not a setback with the LI zone. And then differences there with the side and rear setbacks. Wanted to just point out also to the commission, there are a couple of goals in our 2019 general plan that support this rezone. The community growth and development goal, particularly it states that we would like to have an adequate revenue base, and growth should mostly occur through development within the city. It encourages businesses and industries to locate and invest within the city, so this would be a good business to come into Kaysville. Land use, talks a little bit about business and industry. Just states the most sites primarily used for business or industry should be located along major streets. We do consider Flint Street to be a major street, so given that policy goal, the general plan, it does support that. We did mail out about 22 public notices to the public with a 500-foot radius, or not square foot, but a 500-foot radius of the property. We did receive one public comment through our email, our online email form, that wasn't necessarily opposed to the rezone, but expressed concerns about building height, blocking views, maintaining the residential feel of the neighborhood, and essentially wanting to make sure that if there is something that comes in the architectural style, doesn't necessarily take away from the existing residential feel that is over there. I think the applicant is here tonight. If there is any questions, the commission has for them. That's all I had planned as staff. If there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Commissioners, any questions for staff, before we ask the applicant to come up? Actually, before we start, I want to disclose.
Hi, I'm Brad Walters with Monet Corporation. Happy to answer any questions you have regarding this.
Okay. Mr. Walters, did you want to add anything besides what?
No, I think it's in line with the general plan. This is a piece of property that belonged to my great-great-grandfather, and my great-grandfather homesteaded the home to the south of that. This was my, the home that we tore down was my great-uncle and great-aunts. I started a business here, and I'm a serial tech entrepreneur. I started a business in 2010, up at the DATC then, at the Entrepreneur Building. And over the past 12 years or so, I've grown it to be a sizable business down in South Salt Lake. Kind of serendipity that a number of the people that are key personnel for the company live here, close by, some in West Kaysville, some in Leighton. And so when this property came up, we thought it'd be a good idea to buy this lot and to build us a tech building. So it will have, not necessarily a residential feel, but it'll be what we're calling a Western tech. We're going to have some Western motifs that pay tribute to the kind of the Western livestock heritage that goes there with a high tech orientation. So it'll be two stories, roughly 20, 21,000 square feet over two stories. Backhouse will be warehouses, or warehousing about a quarter of the building, and then the rest is high-end office space. We like dual access, as we will have vehicles coming in and staging for some of the deployments. And then we should have about 60 parking spots. That's about it.
How many employees do you estimate?
It'll be capped at 60.
60, okay.
Yeah, if that.
Can you tell us a little about the business?
Yeah, happy to do it. Happy to sell you on it right now. So the company makes wireless sensors. We have little wireless sensors that are battery-powered, that businesses put somewhere around their environment, and it takes a reading, essentially sends a text message. So all of this, the city of New York, all of their parks have our sensors everywhere. We're in all the ZUPAs, we're in all the Moran I Centers, we're in various LDS church buildings and temples. So it's a global company in Salt Lake. We're about 110 employees. My company in Korea has about 80. We have an office in Paris, one on the east coast, and one in the Midwest. So I'm the sole owner, and this branch is to expand the business to other markets. I mentioned that we've got some technology around livestock. We've also got some for retail applications, like this, this is a new product for shopping carts, for tracking and monitoring shopping carts. We've got that ready to roll out. And so we won't do manufacturing, I think that I'd emphasize that. We do that in Salt Lake and in Boise, and a facility in California. But this is, this is high-end engineering jobs exclusively, maybe a few from the other side of the aisle and marketing, but primarily it's high-end engineering.
So, and so you actually manufacture these?
We do. We design, manufacture. We actually export more than we import from the US, which is one best estate this year. We've won best internet of things company for the past three years internationally. We're a highly recognized company for what we do.
And am I understanding correctly that the only individuals that would be coming and going are employees? It's, you don't have high volumes of customers that are visiting?
Yeah, no, we don't have customers. We'll have a customer maybe once a week. We will have conference rooms and entertain customers, and bring them up to Orlando's for some tacos. We just don't have many, you know. Utah is not a destination for, typically for businesses to come to. We do travel quite a bit and go to trade shows and things, though.
In a worst-case scenario of this were not to go through, then where would you go?
Great question. Well, I'd flip the property. I've had six offers for it since I bought it, which is unfortunate. I believe we need more business space. I don't have a contingency plan there. I do have my warehouse and office space in Salt Lake's close to 40,000 square feet, and we're tapped there, but I don't have a contingency plan.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
What would the, I guess, let me ask it this way. In terms of what the building and the property is going to look like once it's fully developed, is it just going to, in your opinion, I realize this is subjective, is this going to fit in with the business park, you know, immediately to the east of it? Or is it going to look different than the buildings and the uses that are already there?
I think it'll be the best-looking building down there. And I just, I mean, there's a couple of newer buildings being built, and I know a lot of the owners of the other buildings. It will be a business building, first and foremost. It will, it'll, big entrance with glass and brick and some timbers. It will look like buildings down there. It's not going to be a tilt-up, but it's going to have similar look to Gibbs Smith's building, some of the others. So, yeah. It's not going to have much landscaping. We're leaning towards not doing that with the water situation.
Will you have inventory, or is it going to be mostly?
We will. We'll have inventory in and out with the model, like shopping cart business. We'll stage there, and then the model is to install. So, yeah, there will be materials coming in and out, but probably in waves.
You mentioned about 60 employees you'll cap it there with also remote work, but also deploying. On average, how many employees do you think will be there on a regular basis?
Yeah, it'll hit 60.
Okay.
It'll hit 60. That's just.
That's good for you.
Okay, commissioners, anything else? Ms. Walters, thank you.
Walters, thank you.
All right, commissioners, questions, discussions, before we? We'll turn it over to public comments. Is there anybody here wishing to discuss this item? Okay, we'll close it to public comments, back to us. Spirit of things, I love the idea. Obviously, I did some research on it, on the organization, the company. We're keeping jobs in Kaysville. I don't think there's any one of us that'll go against that. The location is where we would expect it to be. Am I missing anything?
No, it seems to fit right in.
It fits the area, it fits with kind of what we put in the amended plan.
I'm sorry, you said there was one public comment, and what was that about again?
So they said that they weren't really opposed, it's where they would expect that type of a use to come in, but that they're, I think they were essentially just saying, please be cognizant that there are still residential properties in the area, and just wanting to, you know, keep that in mind as the design. I think, you know, like Mr. Walter, Waters, said that, you know, not going to be a tilt-up building, a nice professional-looking building. It was mostly just centered around architectural, wanting to make sure that doesn't detract from the other residential properties in the area.
Perfect. Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Ready for motion. Okay.
I would move that we recommend to the city council approval of the rezone request for Monet Corporation at 492 South Flint Street, from the current RA Residential Agricultural District to the LI Light Industrial District as requested. I'll second.
Obviously, voting goes to you.
I'll go. I vote aye.
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 Okay. That is Agenda Number Three. Going to move on to Agenda Number Four, public hearing for rezone application of, from B-Builders, 602 South Angel Street, from A1 Light Agricultural District to R-18 Single Family Residential District, with PRUD planned unit residential overlay. Staff?
Thank you, Chair, commissioners, and members of the audience. I do want to just take a brief moment to just explain the process. I think a lot of times, the public comes in, they're not very familiar with how a process like this works. Maybe they've never received a public hearing notice before. But the Planning Commission will hear the presentation tonight, will have a presentation from staff, and then from the applicant. The main reason why we're here tonight is because the applicant paid us a fee, and we're processing their application. So we do give them an opportunity to speak. The Planning Commission will also hear those who are here to speak for the public hearing. And then they will, as they just did with the previous application, they will take a vote and send a recommendation to the city council. The Planning Commission is what is called a recommending body, they're not a deciding body. The city council is the land use authority on rezone applications. So about three weeks or so after tonight, we will send this application forward to the city council for their decision. And based on what the recommendation is tonight, you know, you may choose to attend that meeting, but we did, we did want to just convey to the public, that's the process. So no actual decisions, at least on this application, will be made here tonight, just a recommendation to the city council. So that being said, we go back, the B-Builders is the applicant, they are here this evening as well, to address the commission with any questions you may have. They have submitted an application to rezone a property that is 1.66 acres. It's currently zoned A1 Light Agricultural. There is one single-family home that exists on the property. They've asked to go from A1 to R-18 Single Family Residential with a pred overlay. The current density entitlement on the site, with a minimum square foot, lot size requirement, they could fit one residence on there. Going to 8,000-square-foot minimum lots, they could fit nine. So again, here's just a view of the property, and then a zoomed-out view that gives you a better feel of what the entire area looks like. Here's a view of the property, just looking, I think, to the west, across Angel Street. And then there is a variety of zoning in the area. We have some A5 to the north, we have RA, there's some R-1LD and R-120 that's also in the area. As I did with the other application, I just want to go over a few changes in, or differences in regulations between the A1 zone and the R-18. Again, A1 requires a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. The R-18, the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet. They are still single-family homes, and even though that is quite a difference in the minimum lot size, it still is considered low-density, single-family. Current density, again, one unit with the R-18, it could go up to nine. The height requirements or limitations in both zones are the same, 30 feet. Front setback is a little bit greater in the A1 zone at 30 feet, R-18 is 25 feet. The side setback with the A1 is a minimum of 10 feet, and in R-18, it's a minimum of eight feet. And then, of course, we have a rear setback in R-18 is half as much at 15 feet. There is policy that is contained in the 2019 general plan to support this application. I'll go through that real quickly. The first is the identity and character, and the plan states that Kaysville is a primary, primarily a residential community. And since this is rezoned from residential to another residential zone, that would fit within that. It also has a section that talks about growth and development, and reserving land to promote the development of high-quality, diversified, and adaptable to changing conditions. So with the, you know, the environment we have going on with supply chain costs, housing costs, construction costs, and land costs, having a little bit more diversified product in the community is something the general plan would support. Plan for, or the housing plan also calls for having, the majority of housing should still be single-unit, um, sorry, single-unit detached, and this does also fit into that policy as well. Again, it mentions supporting a variety of housing choices throughout the community. That's not necessarily tied to one side of the city or another, not necessarily tied to north or south side. So it just says spreading that throughout the community. And then there, again, is the plan for additional moderate-income housing that supports rezoning properties to single-family, to R1, that would fit within this. Clustering in residential areas, which is where the pred overlay comes in, and then permitting less costly designed materials and construction of housing. The pred overlay allows subdivisions to vary from traditional city standards by having a private lane, and then they would be responsible for maintaining that street. But because of that, they can cut down on construction costs, because the road width would be a little bit less than what we would require if it were to be public right-of-way. would be a little bit less than what we would require if it were to be public right-of-way. So that pred overlay fits in with that. And then again, rezoning for densities, it's a little more amenable to moderate-income housing. The applicant did submit a concept plan, which I included in the packet. It shows the nine homes that they wanted to present, and then a connection of a street from Angel Street and then onto Johnson Lane. We did mail out public hearing notices. About 31 were mailed, again, to that 500-square-foot radius of the property. We have received a lot of public comments on this application. To summarize all of those, the majority of them said that the lots proposed are too small, the density is too high. There were concerns about traffic and parking, safety, the loss of the rural character in the area. There were also some concerns about having adequate water noise. And then I did want to note that at least one of those emails was actually in support of the zone change. The balance of those was opposed to the application. So the applicant did submit slides to me that I have included in the presentation, so when we're ready to move on to their portion, I can go through the slides for them. But that's what I had for the Planning Commission tonight. I'd be happy to address any questions you have at this point.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? And you mentioned the applicants are here or are not here?
Yes, they are here this evening.
Can we ask the applicants to come forward and...
My name's David Nielsen, I'm with Bee Builders. This home is the last of my grandfather, Mayor Johnson's, 15 acres that most of these homes came from and all these lots came from. Grandma Johnson's gone, and so the family has decided to part with property, and they've asked me to come up with a plan for it, and this is what we came up with. Please continue. So in looking at the actual property and the overlay, our proposal is for eight homes. We have the full participation of all 10 children of the Johnson family who are part of the trust. We're looking for eight single-family patio homes between 1,500 and 2,500 square feet, three car garages. We're looking for about 8,400 square feet, that does not count the private lane. Minimum side setbacks, we're looking for 12. Minimum distance between the homes, at least 24 feet. That gets us out of... A lot of what I see in the area is 8 to 10 feet. Like, it doesn't matter how big the house or the lot is, they still don't look great when they're that close together. Single-level living and downsized homes are in very high demand. In fact, you know, a couple of members of the Johnson family have expressed interest in buying these homes so that, hey, they could live back on their father's land and their family land, but also because they're single-family homes. Please continue. This is the concept of what we're going for. Exterior materials can vary. If the Planning Commission approves this, we'll be certainly taking input. It's a 1,500-square-foot main floor, two-bedroom home with an option for two additional bedrooms upstairs or a bonus room over the garage. Our target market is 55-plus with grandkids to come and visit. So that's kind of what that looks like. Next slide. I had a video for this, but this is just a neighborhood proposal. It's a very simple street, decent space between the homes, opportunity for lots of parking, both in the driveway and on the side of each of the homes, because that's why we want to maintain that 24 feet between the homes minimum. Next slide. Directly behind the property, there's twin homes. There's four twin homes that were done by Grandpa Johnson. They're within 150 feet of the property. Each home is on 8,400 square feet, 70 by 120. Now, the tax records do show that as slightly larger because each home does own a portion of the private lane, which is quite distant. So that bumps it up to 10,000 square feet. But if you look at the actual lot, they're 8,400 square feet, and that's exactly what we're requesting. Next slide. Within one mile of the home, Ovation Homes did the 7,000-square-foot, 0.16-acre worth smaller setbacks than we're asking for. They also were done next to very large one-acre lots, and that's within one mile of the property. Next slide. There is existing private lanes that do above the property. There's two of them, one behind the property and one right next to the property, so that's also something very common. Right behind the property, that home has a side setback of eight feet next to the twin homes. Next slide. When we looked at these, we wanted to make sure that we had... We addressed parking and a feeling of open space and a feeling of neighborhood as we did this. And so we went around and looked at this, and this is what we're trying not to have, is this level of, you know, 10 feet between homes. That's not what we're going for here. Next slide. It was interesting, as we drove around, we noticed that even on Dutch Lane and Knightsway, there were lots of the homes that are within 16 feet of each other. And again, that's something we're trying to avoid. So we're hoping for the opportunity to do this, again, with the blessing of the Johnson family, and, you know, I hope that you will consider this for approval. Thank you.
Actually, David, could you just stick around for a second or two? Commissioners, any questions for David?
What is the lot widths that you have proposed? Do you know off the top of your head?
I do. They are 77... I believe they're 77 feet right now, 77 by 102.
So this is similar product to what's over on 200 North right there that was done by Frost's?
Similar, more space between them?
More space between them, okay.
Similar product, yeah. And it was interesting to go over to that product, that... If you go over to that particular subdivision, it is very clean, it's very quiet, and it's very uncluttered, just because of the target audience of those homes.
Sorry if I missed this, but what's the width of the lane?
I've got it designed right now at 30 feet on both of those. So it's 30 feet with a five-foot sidewalk on either side and then 20 feet back to the homes. So it accomplishes our 25 feet at a minimum. And we were hoping to connect into Angel Crest Way. Grandma did buy into that, so she could connect to it into the future, just to provide more egress. It's better to have an egress, a single egress... Better to have an exit and an egress than a single egress and exit point into the subdivision.
So just keep it on that page?
Yes, sir.
So minimum side setback, there are 12, and R1 is eight, so you've gone over that, correct?
Mostly to accommodate parking.
Got it, okay, parking. And then front setback?
25.
25, okay, so keeping with that. Only difference there is the 30 previously, and then the...
It's 15 in the back.
Yep, 15, okay, got it.
And on most of those homes, we're greater than that.
Got it. Commissioners, anything else for David? Just one obvious question.
Yes, sir.
There's obviously some pushback from the community. Have you had a chance to meet with your neighbors and discuss, and if you could talk about that?
We have not yet had a chance. We were going to see what happened at this meeting, and then we were looking to address it. We thought that because Grandpa Johnson had subdivided most of that original 15 acres, that we would get a favorable bit of feedback to it.
Okay. All right. Anything else? David, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, want to discuss anything, or should we open up to public comments? Thoughts? Public comments? Okay, at this point, we are going to go ahead and open up to public comments. Again, if I could ask, keep it to three minutes, staff will keep track of that. Let me see, looking at the list, Mr. Stroh, are you here? So just real quick, I'm going to paraphrase, pardon me, before we begin. I believe we had about 24 emails, if I'm not mistaken, all opposing, one in favor, and I'll paraphrase some of the things that were brought up. Traffic, change in density, is there going to be adequate infrastructure to support water with the drought that's coming up? Let me see what else. I think, Mr. Stroh, you brought up a good point. While you're not necessarily opposed to this, you're more amenable to something somewhere in between. And then there was a really good write-up from the Joey and Stephanie DeFilippis. Pardon me if I'm killing that pronouncing last name. You guys broke it down into three categories: public safety, traffic, neighborhood character and feel, and loss of agricultural zone and open space. And like I said, I'll paraphrase that, because there were some good points that were brought up. You talked about Angel Street being part of Safe Routes Utah Plan, which enables children safely walking and biking to school. You thought that this would be disruptive to this, neighborhood and character feel. You mentioned, again, that would obviously change the feel, in your opinion, and then the loss of agricultural zone and open space. Trying to think what else am I missing as far as paraphrasing? And then... Yep, so that's about it as far as paraphrasing. Go ahead, Mr. Stroh.
Thank you, sir. My name is Caleb Stroh, and I am a resident of Caseville City, and I am directly affected by this agenda item. I live about four houses away from the proposed rezone, even though I'm not within the 500 feet. I'm still four houses away. I would first like to say that I understand the position of the applicant, and I do respect their decision to request this rezone. I also believe in diversified housing opportunities. And then I've got a whole list of things here, and after listening to the spiel of the applicant, I'd like to change things a little bit. Some of the stuff that he mentioned, and of course, we are taking his word that he's going to do this, that, and the other, I'd like to change a few things here, but I'll still go through a couple of my bullet points. We are in a water crisis and an energy crisis in this state. Adding what many to believe is high-density housing into an already-stressed infrastructure, I think, could be dangerous and perhaps irresponsible. Other cities in Utah have paused this type of housing, and in my opinion, for good reason. This section of Angel Street was just recently repaved and refinished, opening this area to construction and thereby damaging a newly paved roadway is, in some people's opinion, imprudent and perhaps wasteful of taxpayer-funded infrastructure. I also don't see any allowance for green space in the project documents, an important part of our community. I did have concerns about drainage, home height, and setback, but a lot of that was addressed by the applicant just now. I do also think that there could be some unforeseen safety concerns regarding the egress onto Angel Street. The proposed access will empty right onto a blind quarter, a blind corner that can be a somewhat dangerous area. It'll also dispel traffic right into an already-busy school zone. I do still feel, even after the spiel from the applicant, which I really appreciate it, that a more reasonable and balanced approach to this rezone might be prudent. Pardon me. And I do recommend that the Planning Commission not authorize the applicant's request for rezone at this level of housing density. I think our community would be better served with lower-density lots while still building reasonable and affordable home sizes. I'd like to respectfully thank you for your time and consideration, and appreciate the opportunity to share my views. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stroh. One quick question. You mentioned that you don't support at this level. Originally, it was at nine, now it's down to eight. At what level would you feel comfortable? Just opinion.
Gosh, you know, with those setbacks, I don't know. Eight doesn't seem too terribly unreasonable, but there's still a part of me that thinks perhaps six might be a little better fit for that community. You know, I mean, as silly as it sounds, I'm only four houses away, and I'm not within 500 feet of that.
That's fine.
The point being, those are big lots around there, and I think a lot of the people that purchased those lots bought in that area for that reason. Now, times change, I understand that, but I don't know if that answers that question.
Can I ask for clarification? Is it nine or is it eight? Because the plan still shows nine.
So what was submitted with the application was nine?
No, I was going to give us a two at the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
I didn't want the spacing to be requested.
Eight, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
So the zoning would allow, I mean, just based off the square block?
Right. I think you need to consider that it could allow up to nine.
Yes, correct.
If I could say just one last thing?
Yeah, please.
I'm always a little bit apprehensive when a builder, no offense, says, "We promised we'll only do four houses." But just authorize it for nine. And I know that they shouldn't be able to go back on that, but it always makes the public at Barnes a little bit apprehensive when... And I'm not... I'm taking it in his word that, you know, let's just put in eight, but when you say, "Well, we'll authorize it for 10 anyway," and then all of a sudden, 10 go in, dang it. Anyway.
Okay, thank you. Next, I believe it's Mike Pluham. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Mr. Williams, Mike Pluham, 1498 Johnson Way, just a couple blocks to the west of Johnson's. I'd like to agree with Mr. Stroh in the email from Mr. DeFilippis, and request that someone address the... We are in an HOA out there, and it was told us that Art Johnson's front yard was our green space. So we could possibly get that looked into and find out what's going on with that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is Kathy Johnson. Kathy Johnson?
I'm Kathy Johnson.
You don't have to, ma'am, I just...
I see your name here.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Some kind of fraud going on here.
Okay, I am Kathy Johnson. I am Art Johnson, Evelyn Johnson's daughter-in-law. I've lived here in West Caseville since we were married. My grandparents and foreparents settled Caseville, so I've got a lot of vested interest in Caseville. If you could flip back to that screen that shows the... Was all writing before that. It was city stuff, it wasn't this proposal. Okay, you just passed it. Nope, was writing.
I think it was the concern.
Okay, that one. Since I've lived here this long, at first, West Caseville was huge farms. There was cattle all over, there were sheep, there was all kinds of fields of grain and all that stuff. There were big, deep ditches. There were the farmers going up and down the roads with their tractors and combines. It was a nice place to live. And as time has gone on, I can remember voting when the city wanted to change it from the big places, they wanted to allow some smaller places. So they wanted to vote for one-acre lot or five acres. I voted for five. But since then, every time another group of... Another farmer dies, then there are a whole bunch of developers just right there to gobble it up, gobble up the land. Anyway, so as life has gone on down there, you get the big developers, and we're devout or... Not devout, we're developing this guy's farm, and in goes all the subdivisions. And at one time, they were bigger, they're getting smaller. But every time the developer wants to come in, in my experience, they mostly get what they want, and the city likes it, because the city nowadays kind of doesn't want agriculture down there. They don't want us to have our water shares, they don't want any much rural. And these people say that it's losing rural character. That makes me laugh. That was gone so long ago. There's... Subdivisions moved in and decided that the silage pits stink. There it goes. There's no rural character left. As far as adequate water, that man mentioned... Oh, is that my three minutes?
Yes.
So, anyway, for years, we've had to take what we didn't want, and we have that... The development that you're talking about, what's the name of it?
Ovation.
Ovation, is our back property. And as far as having too many people, they're a nice group, they're really good old people, and they drive one, maybe two cars. If you put in all the houses, family houses, how many teenagers can the families get in there? And they drive five or... And they drive five or six cars per house, and all the friends, and I've lived through both. Anyway, for not having anything to say, I guess I said something.
Thank you. Karen Hart, did you want to say anything? Karen Hart?
No.
Okay. Dave Nielsen? Oh, that was, oh, sorry. David Johnson?
I'm Dave Johnson, I'm Art and Evelyn's son. So, when we were looking at this proposal, we, with Ovation building east of us, and they did 22 homes on the patio homes, and we didn't know if that was going to fit with us because we have, we have a little over two acres, we have horses, and, but it's been a really good addition to our area, and it's kind of, those patio homes have been kind of a nice, quiet area and kind of a change. I don't know that having more homes would use maybe more water of the city water, but with the smaller lots, they would use less of the pressure water that we all use to water our lawns and stuff. And I, the way it's changed, the way it's changed in West Caseville, it's kind of, we have a lot of variety now. We have up where Jay Green, where Jay Green's property was, his house was taken down, and they built those, those condos up there by Smiths, and then Ovation built behind us with the patio homes. So, I know there's going to be a lot of diversity in West Caseville, and there will be, as it keeps developing, as Saunders build and some of the other farms fill in. And I do construction, and so, I don't mind the diversity, and I don't mind the changes. And all the people that have, we were down here in '72 when there was hardly anybody here, but the people that have moved into West Caseville have been really great people and really great addition to the city, no matter what size lot that they have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Weeks? Jamie?
I wasn't planning on this. I can't talk very long.
That's fine.
But I love all of these people, and my son, who gave the presentation, so I feel torn in between, but I know this is what our parents wanted. It was a discussion that took place. I know this is what Dad wanted. His goal was to make it so everybody could enjoy West Caseville the way we have for...
How many years?
Fifty years. And grateful for the opportunity to continue to develop his land and go ahead and pass that on to more families to enjoy because we have loved it.
Stephanie Nielsen? Okay. Natalie Morrison?
I am also a Johnson, well, if I'm related to these Johnsons, but my family's been in Davis County for a long time. When Pioneer Scott here, Brigman sent four families to Davis County, and my family was one of them. So, we've been in Davis County for a long time. When my husband and I got married, we moved to Syracuse and bought this great one-acre property, and they put a high-density development behind us, so we moved to Caseville because of the rural feel. We loved Caseville. And I totally support the Johnsons' desire to develop their property, and I believe they should be able to do it, but going from one home to nine homes is like, you know, going from Zeta 100 on the freeway, super fast. It's just, it's difficult for the neighbors to accept that because almost all of us, I believe, came here for the same reason, we all want that rural feel. And I believe that there are places in Caseville where the higher-density housing is absolutely needed and more affordable housing, but according to them, that's not what's happening here. The houses there are not going to be affordable, they're 650 to 800, that's about, you know, what everybody else is going for. So, it's not checking that box. I just think that it's too much for the area. If you've driven around that area, it just doesn't match the rural feel that the majority of the residents knew therefore, especially, you know, the people that I've talked to, and just a lot of people, and I know you've got quite a few comments on that, they're very expensive houses on tiny lots. And the reason that concerns me is because that sets a precedent. I live right, so, behind me is cows. I love cows, I prefer them to people, which is probably why I moved where I did. The Saunders property is right behind mine, and this is going to set a precedence. And when Dick Saunders dies, I know his son is going to be faced with the same thing, and I don't want high-density housing back there as well. It's, you know, they're neighbors, it's in the same area, and if you did that in this case, then they would expect it as well, and it's just not right for the area. Like I said before, I believe that there is a place for that in Caseville, and it's probably, I think, geared toward affordability, which this really isn't. I think a lot of people would say, "You don't like it, move." My family, we can't move. I have two college-age kids in wheelchairs, we've spent over $100,000 making our home accessible for our kids, and moving is just not an option, but I just don't want that taken away. I believe that they totally have the right to develop their property, just, that's a lot of houses, and it takes away the feel that the majority of us have worked really hard to achieve in Caseville, and that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I've got, looks like Jesse and Justin Stringham. Welcome.
I'll just keep it simple. I, for the most part, agree with most of the things in the 24 emails you've already taken a look at. I live directly behind the Johnson property. I believe something new that I was not even aware of when we decided to come here, that they're planning to do a road that cuts into our private street, which is probably not something that we would agree to. And to keep things simple, I think you asked the question of what we would recommend. R120 seems reasonable and consistent with the area, so I'll keep it as simple as that. Oh, I guess there's one last point. I think the R18s usually have common green area attached to it. Didn't appear that that was part of the plan. So, that's my perspective, R120.
Okay, thank you. Erica Townsend?
Hi, my name is Erica Townsend, and I live in the Suncrest Meadows HOA, and my husband and I, and four children, have lived here for nine years, and we moved here from Sussex County, New Jersey. In New Jersey, they, in Sussex County, New Jersey, they had something called the Highlands Preservation Act, and where they had to keep the landowners from building a property less than three acres. We chose and moved to Caseville, to West Caseville, because of the rural hometown feel, and the knowledge that our students would get the best education that education had to offer in Utah, and their Caseville schools like Davis High, Centennial, and Snowhorse. We moved here to Caseville under the impression that there were similar rules to follow, and the land and area would be kept, it would keep its rural hometown feel. In the last nine years, we have seen these rules continue to be broken over and over, and exceptions made. I hope that Caseville will be better at keeping the rules than New Jersey. Allowing nine houses to be built on 602 Angel Street will cause possible water shortages in a drought, just like has been said before, more overcrowding in our schools, and the ability for more high-density housing to be built over time to completely change the rural hometown feel that I and a lot of others have moved to Caseville for. Please keep the rural and hometown feel of West Caseville by requiring your builders that do build in this area to stay within the current zoning rules. Because of traffic, we've already had one child hit by a car right there at that area that's going to be built on. One child has already been hit by a car because there's so much traffic already. And we need to be careful about changing and make exceptions to our rules because over time, this is just going to continue to happen over and over and over again. Keeping the areas under rules and regulations helps all of us to have the things that we moved to an area for. Two to four houses seems reasonable to me, you know, even five if that came to it, but I agree with the person that said it's going to dig up that road that we've all been paying taxes for. We've been waiting for the time for Caseville to take care of that road on Sunset and Angel, and it finally got taken care of, and here we are, ready to dig it up again. But that's what I have to say, and I hope you can take my thoughts into consideration.
Joey DeFilis?
Hi, I'm Joey DeFilis, I live at 579 South Angel Street, just kitty-corner across the street from this property, and I thank you for summarizing the letter that I sent. I did just want to add a little bit of color to that. My wife and I and our three young children moved here last year from West Valley, from a neighborhood that coincidentally had about 8,000 square-foot lots on it. We moved here so that we would be able to get a lot, you know, a larger lot, and live in an area that had larger lots, and have a little bit more open space and a more rural feel than we were used to in West Valley. And so, call it Murphy's Law, or the real estate corollary of Murphy's Law, less than a year later, we're having 8,000 lot, 8,000 square-foot lots proposed across the street. And, you know, I, so I represent sort of the future, I guess, of Caseville rather than the history of Caseville, which I have a lot of respect for, and I, I respect the, you know, the agricultural history and the farmers and the Johnson family, you know, and where this comes from. I do have a few specific concerns about the proposal as it's been made, and I put those in my letter. One of them is the public safety. The lane intersecting with Angel Street, which is a major street, concerns me because the west side of that street is the school route where the children have to cross, and so, there are, you know, the couple intersections that there are existing, they have to have crossing guards at, and that helps the children get to school. This would add another intersection, and not, especially if the lane is allowed to penetrate the neighborhood and go connect to Angel Crest Way, you'll potentially have traffic being diverted, not just from these homes, but from the entire neighborhood beyond, coming to that intersection and creating more traffic. Angel Street is also a cycling route, and there's constantly cycling traffic going up and down that, and so, every additional intersection that you add creates more interaction and possibility for accidents. Like I said, the reason we moved here was to have less density, and I understand that there are reasons consistent with the general plan that, you know, along Angel Street, it says medium density could be considered, and what I would ask is that you consider doing something that's more in line with the surrounding area. The R18 zone allows narrower lots of 60 feet, whereas most of the surrounding zones allow a minimum of 90 feet, and it would be possible to choose another zone that would increase the density from, say, R120, but still maintain a width that is more consistent with the area, you know, R110 or R1LD, which is currently the precedent. If you go south on Angel Street a little bit, there is a strip of R1LD there, but nothing more dense than that currently. So, I think the first question that should be asked is if there is compelling reason to take away agricultural zone, because once that's gone, we're not going to get it back. And I don't know what the right amount of agricultural zone is for Caseville going forward, but this would reduce that zoning in the city. And then the second thing, you know, if there is compelling reason to get rid of agricultural zone, then I think that the residential, you know, the choice of residential zone should be a zoning that is consistent with the surrounding area, particularly when it comes to the width, so that there's not a visual disruption or, you know, inconsistency with the surrounding homes. Thanks.
Thank you. Christina, and I cannot figure out the last. Chris? Yes, thank you.
I am also one of Art Johnson's children, the youngest, and I'm going to try not to get emotional because my dad hated it when women cried. So, I'm going to try to keep my crap together. I grew up there in 15 acres, and that's all been sold to a lot of the people that are here, and took care of my mom and dad for many years. And two things my dad said, "If we didn't want so many people to live in Caseville, we shouldn't have had so many kids." There are 279 children of Art and Evelyn Johnson. They have 52 grandkids and 135 great-grandkids. Now, I know somebody was talking about the new, not the old, and I'm all about the new. Let's let people have someplace to live. My older siblings are all these baby boomers right there, they're a tad bit older than me, and senior living would help them. Having a place to live without stairs would help them, and that's what my dad would want, that's what my mom would want. I lived there when Daddy killed a cow because that's what we raised, that's how we lived. We had a garden that was one acre, we had cows. I can't name, there's no animal we didn't raise or kill. My mom bottled rabbit, for Pete's sakes. Nasty, but Dad was skinning a cow one day that we had killed to eat, and neighbors complained. That was our pet. He was like, "No, that's my food. You want a pet, buy your own cow." And that property was my Dad and Mom's, and they left a legacy of people, and I know how much he loved Caseville. I know how much I love Caseville. And unfortunately, I don't live here right now, but I love this city. I come to the Fourth of July parades, my dad started the water parade, my dad started your New Year's Eve party, the clock tower, you name it. He was all about progression, he knew about it, it's inevitable. The only thing in this life that's really is change, and the only way to be, to deal with it is to be a part of it, and I believe that. I do want to address the green space comment, and this is another neighbor that I love and adore, and I've sung with his wife. My dad lets anybody walk on his property. My dad has a playground in his property that if anybody wants to come play, they can come play, and I worry. I'm like, "What if somebody gets hurt? They're going to sue you." And he's like, "They're neighbors, they won't do that." And that's the feeling that I have for Caseville, that's the feeling that I have for this land, and that's the feeling that I want to continue.
I believe it's Dawn Steele. Dawn?
I just can't support it, but I know as a sibling, as a child, it is a positive thing to help change, and calls for 55 months are necessarily needed this time.
Thank you. Tyler Ross?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. So, my name is Tyler Ross, I'm a resident of Caseville as of a whopping two years ago. We live just north of the zoning request on the other side of the farmland, as you can see in that map prior, and over there on Leola Street. And I'm born and raised in Bountiful, Utah, that was our home, and I've got a lot of family roots there, and I think over the course of time, my desire to continue to stay in Bountiful continued to grow. My wife and I got... continue to stay in Bountiful continued to grow. My wife and I got married about 12 years ago. We purchased property in Bountiful and wanted to continue that legacy of our family. But concerns around home sizes, lot sizes, the traffic increase, et cetera, led to our eventual departure a couple of years ago to come out here to Kaysville, which coincidentally is where my, my wife was born and raised. So through that convincing on her end, we ended up making the drive over here to Kaysville. And kudos to this planning commission. I think you've done a fantastic job with what you've set up in the communities out here. The lot sizes, the density as it stands today is the biggest attraction for us to come to this area. And I guess we've absolutely loved our time here in Kaysville and plan to keep this as our roots for our family moving forward. And my, my concern is primarily around the element that while this might not affect us directly, being a few blocks to the north of this situation, my concern is maybe a potential precedent with what could happen with some of that farmland just behind us. So as much as I love Kaysville and want to keep this in my, in our family roots moving forward, I think there is a preference to keep it to maybe one or two neighbors in the backyard versus potentially more. My condolences for the loss there. I truly am sorry for the element there. And I guess my hope and my goal is maybe there's a happy medium that we can find to find a resolution with this type of a situation by reducing some of the proposal there to maybe four, to keep that element of what's, what's held true with Kaysville. So that's my comments. I appreciate you taking it.
Thank you. Samantha Kelly?
Hi, thanks so much. So my family and I actually just moved here like six weeks ago. We just finished building a home. We have the, we bought the last half acre lot on Angel Crest. We came from Bountiful. We loved Bountiful, just like the previous gentleman said. But we were looking for something for more space. And we knew that we didn't want to be in a development if we were to build. So like Sunset Equestria and areas like that kind of had no appeal to us. So when we found the lot on Angel Crest, the word, as kind of hokey as it sounds, we kept using to everyone was magical because it had, has this amazing feel behind it. And then the Johnson property is just so beautiful. And also, a really, really huge thing for us on Angel Crest is the fact that it's a private lane that dead ends. And it's not a through street. We have three young children. And just having our kids be able to ride up and down that street is huge for us, knowing that it's totally safe for them. So I also believe that, like, we could find a compromise between nine homes and having it be just agriculture. Obviously, like, my preference would be just as stays as one home. It's a beautiful lot. But I understand that that's not always possible. So I think it would be amazing to have a happy medium. And I would really, really, when I didn't know about that through street connecting all the way to Angel, I would love, love that to not happen. So at the very, very least, we could keep Angel Crest as it is without connecting, just because that's a major safety concern. Thank you.
At this point, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Dave, did you want to come back and address any of the things you heard?
No, I'd be happy to. We're not sold on the street connecting. I recently built a home in that enclave in Farmington, just off of, when you get off and there's little iron gates as you go into Farmington proper. And one of the biggest reasons that we wanted to connect into that was the, the ability to, if something's blocked, if something happens, that we can get out the back. So the, the solution there was to put a gate so there's a second egress in case of emergency. Happy to do that here, so it's not a through street. I get that. As far as water's concerned, that entire property right now is lawn. I don't know of a bigger water suck. So, you know, Saturday, I'm actually tearing out 4,000 square feet of lawn in my home in Brigham City. And, you know, because our target market is older people, we didn't want huge yards to take care of. We don't want, you know, a lot of green space and open space to take care of. And we've got water restrictions. I mean, let's, let's face it. So we were looking to, to have some lawn, to keep some kind of character and keep trees in the area, but also to zero escape as much as possible. So we just didn't have the upkeep of it. I think, you know, if you look at the city plan, Angel Street is an arterial road. If you drive half a mile north, a third of a mile north, we've got hammerheads, we've got private lands with 24-foot roads. It's something that's happening. Unfortunately, in today's market, a half a million dollars, $550,000 is a starter home in Utah. There's no way around that. I think the plan that we have proposed is far more open space than I see in the larger neighborhoods where people are allowed to build massive homes on massive lots and leave no open space whatsoever. The biggest home I found down there under construction does exactly that with an eight-car garage and no backyard and no side yards. And it's, it's pretty, it's an impressive home. But it's massively on a massive lot. And there's, there's no, no space around it. So I'm happy to address, and I'd be happy to address any of these issues if we could do so in a reasonable way moving forward. And I look forward to comments back from both you and the public. Thank you.
Just a real quick, David, commissioners, any questions for David? Will we have him up here? Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Again, at this point, public commission, the public comments are still closed. The commissioners will now discuss some things. Again, the public comments are closed. I will reopen it up.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. One question. Actually.
Mr. Scherr?
Yes.
If I may, I don't know if everyone got an opportunity to speak. It's, I mean, you run the meeting, of course, and I'll defer to you, but you ended the public comment pretty quickly, like, pretty abruptly.
No, actually, I went down through the list.
Well, I mean, I understand that. And, no, I understand.
Who would like to come up and talk right now?
There is two lists.
Okay. Yeah. The other one is? Nothing.
I was two minutes late.
Okay. All right. So how many more people do we have that would like to come up? Okay. Please, if I can have you guys sign up here. If you've already come up and spoken.
Where's the other list?
One of them's for attendance and one was to be able to speak tonight.
Oh, well, that's for people who read.
I'm sorry, too. I'm an educator.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Last three. Brett?
I'll be brief because I know, yeah, time and everything. My name's Brett Markham. I live immediately west of this project. Growing up here in Kaysville, four decades. Growing up with Josh a little bit. Been here basically through Heisman Kaysville my entire life. Absolutely love the Johnson family. Wouldn't be where I was without them. Phenomenal people. We knew that eventually this was going to be, something was going to be coming. My concern, small concern, I'm guessing it would be addressed. My power actually comes on a pole from there. There's a corner property, and then their power goes across to the my, the very back of my property. I'm assuming power would be addressed somehow. Do I have a concern with that? There was a girl that hit that pole once last year and knocked out the power for my house. And I'm not sure if that was.
I would refer to Perry.
Yeah, I mean, that would be better, for sure. I, I'm concerned about, obviously, adding that many homes to the property. But I guess my biggest concern really is the kind of, again, as we mentioned, is the precedent. As I understand, the, the property between Leola and Ramola, just north of us, if the same zoning were to go through, I believe that would add 113 homes to that green space. And if you do this now, I don't know how you could not go to the next project. There's an additional green space that's immediately east of that as well. So if that gets approved, is Kaysville city, where are you going to put your next elementary school? Our Snow Horse Elementary is already packed. The old principal bought as many portables as they could. Where are you going to put all those kids if you approve each of these for the same zoning? Are you going to be able to service them with the same public? Where are you going to buy land at these costs to put in your next elementary? So those are things I hope that you'll consider. And thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you. Alicia?
Thank you. Thank you for, Johnson family. I totally support you wanting to develop your land and your property. I am from Perry, the Fruit Highway place that is no longer Fruit Highway. Recently, the very last piece of my grandmother's property had been sold and is now full of houses. So I understand both sides. And by the way, I didn't profit from any of that, but that's another story. What I have a problem with is the fact that, you can profit from, it's okay. I wasn't being mean about that. I'm just saying I didn't get anything. So what concerns me is a couple of different things. This is hallowed land for you people because you worked it. And I totally understand that. And you want to give a little bit of legacy to us all. I think it's a little too much that you're giving to people. And can you guarantee that it's 55 years and older? You keep mentioning that you want it to be 55 and older. Is, can you actually say, nobody under 55 live here? We can talk about that later because I know time is short. My main concern is, is the precedent, what you put in, you're gonna, we got other land to develop. It's, Angel Street is already very highly traveled. I encourage you to go walk or drive there during elementary or junior high times, like eight in the morning. Go spend some time over there. Find out how many kids. And I'm sorry, Kaysville, why do we have a sidewalk on one side of the street but not on the other? And then you want to continue to add traffic to an already populated road where schoolchildren, one of my children, are walking on this on one sidewalk of the road, and you're continuing to add traffic for these children? And you're accessing more people to that road? And then you know you're going to have jerk faces drive on that private road between dinghy dings? So you might want to really gate that up a lot better. But I understand that you, what you want to do, and I totally agree with that. But I think there needs to be a better compromise. And I think we really need to consider how our city functions. On one side, we have no sidewalk. On the other side, we do. Like, we're not rural anymore. Rural is like five acres or more. It's not, a half acre is not rural. I understand that. But we need to consider what we're actually doing to that. And just like Brett said and Natalie said, when you set it up, you are inviting everybody. And every developer wants to cram in as many houses as they possibly can on those lands. And you are setting yourself up for that. And it's traffic. And do you have the police officers to support?
Thank you. Justin?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Justin Taylor. I live on Angel Crest, two houses on the private drive from the Johnson property. I am a direct descendant of John Taylor, who, our roots are deep in Kaysville. But we moved here two years ago, and we moved here for a reason. We moved here because of what Kaysville is. Wide open spaces, at least the way I look at it. We live on a half acre lot, and we love it. We absolutely love it. And I, I have a company with over 100 employees, and we move a lot of people to Utah. And I say, go to Kaysville. But this is, this is not Kaysville. Nine lots on a, on a, on a, on a lot this size is not Kaysville. And I won't tell them to come to Kaysville if this is what Kaysville is going to become. I, there is no anger here tonight, as far as I felt. Everyone in here is friends. I think this hurts because no one's talked about any of this stuff. And I think, where's the sense of community here? How come no conversations were had? And I, I think that what you have in here is a lot of level-headed people that probably could have come to a good compromise if somebody would have just started a conversation. I rode my bike past the Johnson's house three times this week, and I thought, you know what? Maybe I'll just go in and ask them what, what, what the plans are. How come we can't just talk about this stuff until we throw out this plan that is absolutely not taking into account what any of these neighbors think? Because it all, it, it, we all disagree with it. And you want to talk about the road that goes through to my road? And, and, and the Johnsons letting kids come play on their greenway? Well, since I moved in, they put up a fence to stop the handful of kids from walking across their, their grass. They don't want that traffic. So now that they're leaving, they're okay with the traffic coming through to us. It, it, none of this seems right to me, but I'm level-headed. And if somebody would have just sat down and say, hey, let's come up with a compromise so that everyone's happy, I think that we all would have come up with a compromise. But this isn't it. This is not it. And so I hope, and I'm putting my, my, my trust and faith and, and you all to recognize this and what it is, what it, what it's, what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I apologize. Commissioner Sunloff, I didn't know that you had seen other people that didn't sign up. So my apologies.
No, and I, and I don't, I apologize for chiming in and making you have to open it back up.
No, it's okay. I think that's been the spirit of this commission anyhow. Okay, one last time, if you've already spoken, obviously. But if you have not spoken before I close the public comments, and, okay, going once, twice, done. And as I jokingly say, if you were here to watch the NBA finals, semifinals, this is not it. So it's more exciting, though, I believe. Okay, back to the commission. At this point, the commission, we're going to, as commissioners, we're going to be discussing things. You may or may not agree with some things you may hear. Please hold comments and let us do our jobs. If we feel there's enough time, we'll reopen back the public comments. As staff has said, we are not the final decision-making body. You will have a chance to convince the decision-makers, AKA your elected leaders, city council, and our staff will tell you when this will come up. Having said that, we're going to do our job. So commissioners, thoughts? I will go ahead and start off. It wasn't a rhetorical question. I think you guys have all known me. I, I always balance the rights of the property owners, whether they're owners today or 50 years ago. They should be allowed to do reasonably, within reason, the property that they bought. I feel strongly in that. I put on the uniform, you know, I swear to defend the Constitution. I still continue to do that. Having said that, being part of the planning commission, we have to balance that with what the community's looking for. So that's my preamble. A couple of things that I heard, and obviously you guys are a lot smarter than me, so you guys can chime in. I think we had somebody ask, brought up the point about the HOA promising that that front yard was going to be open space. I think we can address that. The draw of Kaysville, I love that, and I'll get back to that. Obviously, David came back up and said, not necessarily sold on the, the connecting street, more of a emergency egress. Maybe there's something to be said about that. There were questions about, do we have the infrastructure for school and police? So from my understanding, as far as the school's concerned, it's up to the school district to decide at what point they add another school in that area. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I know we've asked that quite a few times. And based on our research, it is up to the school district, not us. Police, obviously, again, city council can address that as far as the, having the resources. There was talk about green space. Yep, I love green space. I love the outdoors. I don't know what the answer to that is, although in other communities, I've seen groups band together, buy up green space. I'm not saying that's the answer here. I'm just spitballing ideas. What else? What else? And I think anybody that's listened to any of the minutes in the last three years, at least that I've been here, and obviously you guys, some of you guys have been here quite longer, one of the things that we've always recommended to anybody, and I guess this is just for public consumption moving forward, because there's going to be a lot of, you know, the applications for rezoning, it's not going to stop. I always highly recommend the developer, the owner, always, please, have the opportunity to let, to talk to your neighbors, or else you get this kind of a situation. So, that's my monologue, and I will...
So, I'll jump in. A matter of debate for me that I think, and my colleagues can educate me as the newest member of the commission. But, and I appreciate staff's report, and specifically how this request falls in line with the general plan. But the general plan is up for interpretation, because I read it and actually would say that it doesn't support the request. Specifically, it states that development west of I-15 would allow for similar housing densities in existing neighborhoods with consideration of high density near transit stops and arterial streets. Now, I appreciate what staff mentioned, that technically this isn't considered by our definition as high density, but there's no question that this is higher density than the area. I mean, I was just curious, I wasn't familiar with this area of Kaysville. So, I drove there last night to take a look, and yeah, there's just no question that this is very different. And so, you could make an argument there, and several other statements within the general plan that this request is not in line. Another one being that housing compatible with and complementary to existing neighborhoods. So, I think for me, that's the matter of debate that I have, and would appreciate insight from the commission, or if we could discuss that, is if we're using the general plan to guide a decision, how do we truly interpret high density? Is it strictly by the zones? Or are we looking at the density truly of the neighborhood? And are we truly considering what's compatible with and complementary with what's existing?
Well, so I think the plan does talk about the overall density, and kind of sets that. But then it all goes on, as you've pointed out, saying that higher density may be considered a medium density along major streets and along transit stops. Don't have any transit stops out there, but Angel Street is considered to be one of the major streets. And so, therefore, I would view it as the plan saying that higher density housing than what may currently exist in the area or is already developed in areas off of those streets could be allowed, with rationale being that it's adjacent to those streets. Therefore, you have the traffic not winding through neighborhood residential streets so much it can directly access those higher volume streets, capacity streets. And then also, there's the whole concept of looking for a little bit of diversity in the styles of housing, so that neighborhoods aren't all just the same monotone, so to speak. That neighborhood diversity in general is not a bad concept, something that would be beneficial to the community. We also have the moderate income housing element that we look at there, where it talks about looking at ways to allow for more moderately priced housing. It does talk about that fifteen percent of the additional housing should be moderate in the city. In order to do that, you're probably looking at something that's going to be, have development that takes place on somewhat higher density than may what currently exist. Doesn't always necessarily mean that, and I have to say, one of the caveats that a lot of planners use, and people use now, is they say, you know, "Higher density does not necessarily mean affordability." And I think that's a good thing to keep in mind. And if there's, I mean, in general, I find myself looking at this proposal and saying, you know, as the staff has pointed out, it does seem to fall in line with what the plan indicates. But the one caveat, or the one place I'd see a little bit of a not falling in the line with that is the fact that the price point that was pointed out by the applicant here was still pretty high, not necessarily what you would really call affordable. Go ahead, Steve.
Just to point out, I mean, really, you're going to do affordable housing, you're looking at subsidized. You're gonna have to get into light
Yeah, I think that's true.
...housing tax credits. And really, any affordable housing like that is going to be done at the state or city level. And, I mean, looking at development costs now, you're really talking, housing's not going to come down for a while. So, I think, you know, fifty-five and older housing, you know, your deed restricted on it typically. I've looked at a lot of these developments through the years, you know, lower traffic, lower impacts to your community, higher volunteerism, lower crime. I mean, usually, they're win-win for neighborhoods. I've seen them across the board. Typically, you know, you don't have all the impacts that you have, that you get from other communities. So, you're not increasing your density per household with families, but you're increasing with people who are adding to your community but not taking away from resources. So, I think some of the comments for water resources and such are typically not in line with that kind of comment. You don't see that community using water in the higher density because you don't have as many people in the house. And traffic is usually decreased because it's usually one car per household.
I think the point there, though, Steve, is that you're saying that this is doable by deed restriction.
It is doable by deed restriction, so...
It's just up to the...
Building dynamics, innovation, that's what they do.
Well, yeah, and I think if you're trying to really get affordability...
Affordability.
And I mean, I don't think there's any question that we're in an affordability crisis.
And the other word, the other word to use is housing choice. I mean, really, you're adding housing choice, because if I want to transition out of the home I'm in, off my half acre, because my kids have now left the house, also now I have the option to stay within Kaysville in my community because that type of house is available, and maybe my kids could buy my home or somebody else can, and now I can stay close where I have a comfort level and that social network already established.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I think that what was described by the applicant as being the over fifty-five type of housing, I mean, the way that falls out is that you're probably not going to have a family with a lot of kids that wants that kind of a house. It's probably going to fall into something that would, and that is the diversity again in the community. As to the point that some folks have made and I had thought about, and even looked at what's in our plan, about if you open the door for somewhat higher density here, then you've kind of opened the door for the rest of it. I don't really think so, because I think of what it says in our plan, that we look at the higher density along the major streets. So, you look at some of these larger properties that exist not on the major streets, but I think that some are expressing a concern about that. When they develop, the precedent is now set that they could go at a higher density. I think the point could be made, well, they're not on the major street. Therefore, they don't qualify under that provision we have in our plan to say that that's where that higher density belongs. And so, that would kind of mitigate against that. I could see that being the point there. You know, but in terms of the affordability, there's no question that in order to kind of help solve the housing crisis, we need more housing. But we also need more housing that's moderately priced. And just doing more housing doesn't necessarily get you more moderately priced housing. And so, that's something that kind of argues for me a little bit, saying, if we're trying to solve the affordability issue, you know, this isn't maybe the only way to do it. There may be other things that we need to look at.
Just as a snapshot in time to illustrate the affordability crisis that I think we're in, and this isn't breaking news by any means, but on the MLS, Real Estate Multiple Listing Services, right now in Kaysville, there's forty-five single-family homes for sale. There's two that are less than five hundred and thirty thousand. One of them's four seventy-nine, one of them's four thirty-nine, and they're both seventeen hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two baths. Two houses under five hundred thousand that are single-family, and these are older homes. So, again, we're not going to solve that problem with this problem, or with this proposal. But what I would say is, it is a supply issue in part. We've talked about that. And so, the only way you solve the supply issue is you create more units, and you have to do that slowly but surely. You know, so this is a drop in that bucket, I suppose.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I mean, we have to acknowledge, though, and this is being driven by the cost of the land. I mean, if they are forced to develop this like into like three lots, then we're going to have like over a million dollar homes. So, would we rather have three homes of like 1.5 million? Or nine homes that are between six and eight hundred thousand? I mean, I think that we have to argue that relatively this is affordable compared to what other options they would have to do with the land, if they're going to develop it.
Yeah, and I think this affordability issue is never going to go away. At the onset of COVID, I remember we had that one planning statewide meeting, and I remember I asked about the, I guess, estimated number, population growth. And I asked, "Was that pre-COVID or post-COVID?" Because, you know, being in technology, I knew that remote would be the next paradigm shift, and you're going to have people coming back here, you're going to have people moving away from the areas. And obviously, you've got Raytheon, et cetera, three thousand jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think, yeah, affordability, that's, yeah. So anyways, getting back on track, what else we got here?
You know, we talked a little bit too about the issue of the diversity or setting a precedent for higher density development, and that the plan really talks about, certainly for West Kaysville, the density generally being two units per acre or less. You know, in terms of setting a precedent, I don't really, I don't see it, and this is why. Most of the land in West Kaysville, and really everywhere in Kaysville, is developed at this point. We have only somewhere between two and three hundred acres of undeveloped land left in the entire city. If all of that were to develop at what you would call higher density, it's going to be a very minor part of what the overall development in the city is. And so, I just see this in a lot of ways as being a way to introduce some additional diversity, some additional inventory, maybe, hopefully, some additional affordability. I don't know, you know, that kind of depends.
Not going to use that adjective.
But even given that, our plan again limits that somewhat higher density to being along those major streets, and not everywhere in the area that's left that's undeveloped.
I think I read the tea leaf here, and what I, my takeaway is when we hear about you're opening up the door, I think we're talking about rezones, and there's, maybe staff can give us an idea of how many properties in Kaysville would be possibly up for rezon, but I mean, that doesn't surprise me, the idea of rezoning, right? I mean, you, let's say you buy property twenty years ago, five acres, you hope that your kids, when they graduate, will want to live with you. That's not the case. Now, somebody swoops in and says, "Hey, I can help you make some money." You know, and then it goes back to the rights of the landowner, whether it's today, yesterday, or tomorrow. So, I think that's what I see as when people say you're opening up the door is for those rezones. But you're right about pointing out the fact that in Kaysville, there's not, how many acres do we have, literally?
Total, or...
Yeah, I think total, undeveloped, I think.
Two, three hundred.
Yeah.
Oh, left, that's undeveloped. It's between two and three hundred is all.
But rezones, I think that's the...
Well, I think you could say that probably a majority of those two or three hundred acres would look to rezone, could possibly be rezoned. But even if all of it were to be rezoned and developed as higher density, it's not going to be that much in the overall picture of what Kaysville is at this point. The majority, the vast majority of the city's already developed.
Yeah. Well, I think it goes back to what I consider the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law. The spirit of the law is, at least this is my interpretation, maybe that's the wrong adjective, is over and over again, you, people want to move to Kaysville for a certain idealistic reason, and that's changing. I mean, how do we advise the city council as the planning commission? I think that's a big one, you know, the spirit of it, it's... I don't think anybody ever says, "Hey, I'm going to come to, move to Kaysville because there's a bunch of condos there." I've never heard that. Prove me wrong, though, but, I mean, that's why I moved to Kaysville back in 2015, so...
One of the people addressed it, and she mentioned she moved from New Jersey, and back there, they do, they have land, they have land trusts. The state's tried that.
Right.
But the locales have not funded that across the state. I lived in a county that had a land trust unfunded.
Same here.
And so, I think if we want to go down that road, then the counties have to participate.
Well, you're talking about either public or private land trust. That's what I was mentioning earlier.
You have to have public participation, but that's another discussion for another day. I think if things are going to change, as you're talking about, you know, we probably needed to sit down and have, we're on a sidebar conversation, but we probably need to have a conversation in future with where we're going, and look at that, and probably come back and see. But I think ultimately, I'm going to go back and agree with Wolf, I think the changing nature, and this does fit the character, and probably look at this a little harder and get back and...
Steve, some folks are indicating they can't hear you very well.
Sorry, I've been on the phone all day.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to get this commission back on track. I think we've brought up a lot of good points. What's the next step or recommendation to the applicant? I mean, we can do, and we talked about this, we can do one of multiple things. Josh, I can see the wheel spinning already.
Well, I just want to, and I think we've touched on some of them, but I want to try to, for myself at least, address as many of the points that I heard from those who spoke, and just give my take, and then we can sort of put them in the cauldron. And this is in no particular order, so, and I'll try to go fast because it's a long list. So, traffic was obviously a concern that was brought up. And when we say traffic, I think we mean a lot of different things. I'll just focus on one, and that is just the quantity, right? The quantity of cars that this is going to bring. As I've said before, you know, with other agenda items, when probably most, if not everyone in here that's here today wasn't there, so the commission's heard me say this before. I'm not an expert, but I have had, I did spend a little bit of time working for a consulting firm that did traffic planning, so I have a tiny bit of an educated position on this, not entirely. But if a traffic engineer came in and looked at this and were to evaluate the impact of this development from a quantity of cars and what's called a level of service, LOS, level of service on the streets, that just kind of, that just means, how many cars can a street, what's the capacity, the carrying capacity of a street? And how is this development going to affect the carrying capacity? And it gives a grade, like A through F. I don't even know what Angel is right now. It's probably a B or a C or something, probably B closer to an A, I would guess. A traffic engineer, this is my guess, I admit that, this is not based on anything, would say, "This is not even going to be a drop in the bucket affecting the level of service." You would need, even a development like, say, Hill Farms, I don't even know how many lots that was, that might start moving the needle, that size of a development. But nine units, or even if it were four or five, you know, it's not going to move the needle from a quantity standpoint. So, that's not as big of a concern for me. Safety is always a concern in any land use decision that the city makes, whether it's administrative or legislative like this. And I think there was a comment about sidewalks, and that's a valid concern. My guess is, I don't know this, either staff would know, my guess is staff would say, when that street is fully developed, when Angel is fully developed, and the city relies on property owners to develop their properties to put in the full improvements on the street, it probably will have sidewalks on both sides. Now, don't quote me on that, that's a guess. But the reason why there aren't sidewalks in some areas is because the property that's bordering that portion of the road hasn't developed. And when it does, the city will probably make them put in a sidewalk. So, to some extent, unless we want our taxes to be raised so that the city can put sidewalks everywhere they're supposed to be, or that they're planned to be, I'm guessing we don't really want that right now, we let developers do that. Unless we want that to happen, we have to rely on the slow incremental development of the fully improved streets over time. So, unless something becomes acute, where there is a very obvious and, you know, emergency almost type situation, the city might come in and... you know, emergency almost type situation, the city might come in and put full improvements, but usually you let it happen over time. So that aspect of safety is important, but I don't know that this that this development is going to solve it. We, this wasn't so much mentioned in the comments today, but but in a lot of the emails we got, there was comments about the property values being lessened of the of the surrounding property. And, you know, I suppose reasonable minds could differ on this. My guess is if we had a praiser come in here or even a real estate agent or broker, having, you know, $800,000 single family homes on quarter acre lots next to 1.1 million dollar homes on half acre lots next door, it's not going to drastically affect the property values. You know, maybe an expert would come in and disagree with me. I'm guessing.
I agree with you. I mean, you, like, like you said, look, look at the MLS listings. They speak for themselves, especially with what's going on right now, so.
Yeah. Usually, it usually actually goes the other way. So if you have a a property, let's say you have a home or a neighborhood that that averages $600,000 homes, and then someone wants to come in and build a 1.5 million dollar home. That, the neighborhoods will drag that higher priced one down a little bit.
Yeah.
This is the opposite. This is a, this is a bunch of, you know, still really nice expensive homes, $800,000 homes, $700,000 homes. It's not going to bring down the surrounding area. That's just my guess.
But if you're looking to resell your house, if you've been there for a while, they're going to look at the comps and, oh, hey, the comp is one just sold for 1.5 or whatever.
They're going to look over in in the Tyler Meadows or Estates or whatever that road, the street is, and it's not going to affect those property values. That's just my assumption, I admit that. High density, it's already been mentioned, this is not high density, this is, these are single family homes. One reason I asked why the width of the lots was is because if you if you look at, and I don't know if if staff can pull up a zoning map, but the the development that's around the Angel Street Soccer Park, right? That is RA, right? Well, RA, by the letter of the law, is like half acre lots or something, or or it's almost mandated that. But the way they got around that is because they have this, they have four soccer fields that they could count as green space, then they got to have smaller lots. There are quarter acre lots all over that development with widths of the lot that are probably similar to this width. And so in that respect, at least in my opinion, it's not going to, now, I know those are, let's say, I don't know, a par five or four away from this this property. So it's not directly adjacent, but it's not going to be totally out of character for the area if these lots are this size. Infrastructure was mentioned, this kind of goes back to the traffic thing. The infrastructure is what it is, and it's, and the amount of traffic, the relatively small, in my opinion, amount of traffic, is not going to tip the scale of infrastructure being at capacity or being overly burdened. So the new road or what have you, or or the the sewer, you know, storm sewer or sanitary sewer.
Water, power, police.
All of that. I think there's more than enough capacity at this stage. Maybe, maybe in 20 years or 10 years, it might be more of a concern. But those developers at that time will have to deal with it and spend out of their own pocket to solve the problem. There's, I'm going to skip over a few things that have already been hit on. The the lane, the private lane connecting thing, it sounds like there's some willingness to find a creative solution. But at the end of the day, the existing private lane, these are two private lanes. In other words, two private property owners would have to decide what they are willing or what they are not willing to do. The city has no say in that. The city can approve a a plan, but if the other adjacent private lane just says, we are not doing this, period, end of story, then this development has to find a different solution. That's just two, that's just private property rights. You know, back to a sort of a broader comment about change and and you know, this this will change the character of the neighborhood and and those sorts of things. I think that is really, as you'll find here in a second, that's the crux of, I think, that this really comes down to for me. But this is a relative thing, because somebody even mentioned it. I don't even know when it was. Let's say it was in the 80s, maybe it was in the 90s. Kaysville, West Kaysville or Kaysville west of I-15 was five acre lots. And I envisioned that there was a a meeting similar to this, when the decision was made to go from five acre lots, heaven forbid, down to one acre lots. And nobody wanted that to happen. And now we're we're having a similar conversation, and and so this is a where do we draw the line question? And and in my opinion, you know, if we took, if you look at it as a continuum, if if townhomes were being proposed on here, gasp, I think that's too far. That's over the line, in my opinion. So this, this is, as these often are, really close to the line. Where do we want to draw the line? Is it, is nine too many? Is eight too many? Is five okay? Right, this is really close to the line. So if this were more dense, if this were you know, connected units, townhomes or whatever, even twin homes, even though there are some, there's precedent, there's some right at the backyard of this, that would be a little farther away from the line that I think we want to draw. Because with this idea of change, you know, I I mean, I've lived in Kaysville since 1984, and this is drastically different than it was then. Back then, you know, everyone probably could say, I used to, you know, pheasant hunt in this this area or whatever, and you could walk to the to the Great Salt Lake. Well, guess what? You're going to run into a freeway now on both sides of Kaysville. Whether we like it or not, it's not going to be what it was, and so we have to accept that. And, you know, if 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 we're debating, we're really debating over like three or four more units, I almost, on that score, kind of to Quan's point, default on the side of like freedom, like three or four more units? If if we were talking 30 or 40 more units, that's a harder question. Three or four, it's probably not going to be that much of an impact. The only thing that leads me to to vote against this, and then I'll, and I'll stop, and everybody talk, is the only thing that lets me, leads me to say, hmm, maybe not, is there's no other R, is it R110 that's being, R1A is being proposed? The closest one is R114, which I think is up the street, up Angel Street a ways. And then, like I said, that the sort of the Angel Street Soccer Complex subdivision, even though it's RA, it looks more like a R110, let's say.
Can we zoom out by any chance or see more? Oh, that's, yeah, that's a presentation, sorry, yeah.
So that's the only thing that makes me hesitate, is to say, we we don't have an easy, if this was like R1LD that's being proposed, well, that's all around here.
Yeah.
We don't have one that says, we've done this in the general vicinity, and so there is some character precedent. We don't have that. So that makes me pause, and so.
But that doesn't, doesn't that counter, well, again, go back and forth, diversity, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we talk about diversity.
Well, with that, I'll jump back in, and I'm sorry to come back to my same question, because I the two arguments that were made that I think would be debatable is the arterial street, as well as the diversity of housing. But I don't think either one of those trumps the rest of the idea, just like what you were just saying, Commissioner Sunloff, about just look what's around, right? So the arterial street, the general plan says this as well, higher density or moderate income residential development in commercial and mixed use zones or commercial centers or employment centers. There's none of that in this area, right? And so I I once again recognize that by definition of the zones, you may not classify this as high density, but compared to what's there, it's higher density, right? Whether you look at people that are living in the dwellings or just dwellings with land use, it's higher density. So I don't think, you know, as you weigh the general plan, in the similar look and feel, arterial streets are diversity, you could also make an argument that even if you reduce this to five or six homes, the size of those homes will be diverse to the size of the homes that are in that area. So you can make an argument therefore, yeah, it will bring diversity to that particular area. There's a lot of really large homes right in that vicinity. So for me, I I really lean towards a lot of the, you know, the comments that were made by the public of recommending a different proposal of a different zone to find a compromise, which I think is in line with our general plan.
I'd be in favor of not legislating from the branch. I mean, I think that the property owner has come to us with a proposal, and he deserves a vote, and so I think that's what we should vote on.
I I think, let me, I'll just answer maybe I think Cody's real question, which is, how do we justify this by the general plan? I guess the way I look at it is, the general plan is is general, so in a lot of respects, it's in the eye of the beholder. Right, you can, two people can read the same sentence and draw two different conclusions, opposite conclusions. And so what I would say is, if we were, if somebody was leaning in favor of it in the general plan, I think Cody's made good points that have, that would lead not in favor of it. I I think the things that lead in favor of it, to me, are, if you look at page three of five on this agenda item, right in the middle of the page, says the majority of housing should be single unit attached or detached. This is that. The city will seek to provide a variety of housing choices throughout the community, including a means for allowing homes of variety sizes. And then, not in this point, you know, just to put a fine point on it, it's not in the general plan, I don't believe, but it's in city code where there are, it lists the quote unquote major streets. And Angel, you know, we could go quickly list them, it's it's Main Street, 200 North, Angel, Mutton Hollow, Fairfield, 50 West.
Flint.
Flint. What else? Am I missing one? I think that's it.
Crestwood.
Maybe Crestwood. So this is one of those, okay, so that, it meets that there, but.
It still comes back to compatible and complementary, right? So I don't think that's a trump card.
No, it definitely isn't. I definitely agree with that. It's not. But it, but it's there, and those, yeah, that's where, those are, those are the eye of the beholder questions. And, you know, what I would, the only thing I would say in addition to this is oftentimes, the high, the real higher quote unquote, the townhome developments, when they're proposed in Kaysville, I can't think of one recently on the west side of I-15, they're on the east side of I-15, and we get a room full of people who live right around the one that's being proposed, and they all say, the general plan says that these need to be dispersed throughout the city. We have too much over here. Mutton Hollow and 200, or and Main Street, it's happened multiple times. They come and they say that exact thing. They say, why is it all coming here? Put it somewhere else. Put it out west. And here we are, not townhomes, but it's a little more, you know, a little more properties than would be allowed currently, and and if those same people were in this room, then they're not, because it's not touching their property, but if they were, they would be like, put it out there. This is, we got townhomes by our house, why can't they have some single family homes out by them?
I live right down the street from it.
So that is a, that's what's in my mind, and I'm torn. I'm, I'm torn here.
So Toby did bring up a good point, which is the the landowner came to us for a vote. I I totally agree. Having said that, the spirit of the law is that we 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 try to I I don't know if I want to say try to find a middle ground, but we have. So the question is, do we do a straight up and down vote? Do we make suggestions? What are your thoughts? Because, I mean, it sounds like if I were to do a straw hat poll, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the yays would have it. I think I count maybe two nays, maybe. So, I mean, unless somebody comes up with something.
I mean, I think we could really do it either way. We we could do it as a straight up or down vote on the proposal as it is, or we could recommend something that's a compromise or something different. I mean, that's part of our role, is to look at what what is, you know, a good idea for the areas of the city. I mean, the thing to do is maybe to ask the applicant, would they prefer to have just a straight up or down vote on this, or would they like to hear if there's some other options that the planning commission would consider? And we could take our key from that.
Well, before we do that, any other thoughts?
I mean, my thought to that, Wilf, would be if, would be to Toby's point, give them a vote, and if for some reason it's a positive recommendation, then great, if it, for them at least, for the applicant at least.
Right.
If it's a negative vote, we say, we're not shooting this down entirely, we suggest some lesser option. You know, I think that's how you approach it. You you vote what's before us and see where it lies, and then, yeah.
I, you know, maybe just one more comment. I, y'all know I've been in this business for a long time, or had been.
Maybe.
And I've seen a lot of proposals come, and and I've I've heard a lot of hearings where people are pretty opposed to, you know, anything that seems to be a little bit different than what exists in the neighborhood at the current point in time. And I've seen plenty of situations where things maybe have been approved that the neighborhood didn't particularly express, or at least those who came to the meeting didn't express that they would like it. And when it gets built, when it's finally put in, and it's been there for a while, and then you talk to people in the neighborhood, they say, it's great, it's fine. We like the people who are there. We just had that happen here not too long ago in our own city, when we had a proposal for a rezone up here on Main and Mutton Hollow, where a similar type of development had gone in, you know, a few years earlier, just down the road.
Yes.
And people at the meeting who were objecting to that rezone, talking about that other particular development, said, oh, well, no, that one's great. We think that one, you know, it's turned out fine. We like the people that are there, and everything's just fine. But not, we don't want this one. What's different? And, you know, I really kind of appreciated the comment that that one of the speakers here, Mr. Johnson, said tonight, he said, you know, he appreciates all of the people in the neighborhood there. He says, they're all great people, they've been all great additions to the city, no matter what size lot they live on. And I think that's maybe something to keep in mind.
Yeah. I, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to actually ask the applicant come up, back up here, I guess we can ask some of those questions. You guys good with that?
Did we say it again?
Ask the applicant to come back up here to ask if how, what kind of leeway they have before we.
You know, I kind of like what Josh's and Toby's thought was. I mean, we could certainly take a vote on the applicant as they've requested, and then we see how that vote comes out, and then then we maybe have further discussion with the applicant and say, you know, where do you want us to go from here?
I I'd still, like, you know, I'll, I'm going to go on a limb here. David, do you mind coming back up here? I think I get to do this, I think, for a couple more meetings until my term is up, so might as well. Where's my gavel, by the way? Yes. So powerful. Okay, so you've obviously heard the back and forth. Like I said, the the biggest thing, and hopefully somebody's listening that's planning on rezoning, is in the future, you've got to, at least my opinion, it's not the law or anything, but engage your neighbors. Having said that,
can I, can I respond to that?
Yes.
I thought that's what this process was.
Well, yes and no, but if you think about it, we were, it it helps, and if you've seen previous meetings with some other developers, what's the gentleman's name? I keep on forgetting. He's always up here doing development, but I I think some of the better, you you get better results when you have those meetings well in advance, you know, you you don't have to. It's not the the rule, but you open it up, you go talk to, again, that's just my opinion, but in answer to your question, not really, this isn't, because it could go either way if there was so much opposition, there was, you know, and we've done it before, where you think at the surface of it, I've seen this, where it's going to be like, yep, we're going to bless this, move it forward, and then, and then meeting, the you know, the discussions come out of it, it's like, yep, sorry, we're going to go no with this. Having said that, that's that's a different thing. So let's focus what I'm about to ask you, which is, how much flexibility do you have?
I I think.
And I still want to give you a fair vote, but I I'm just.
Well, I I'm happy to to entertain any other options.
Okay.
We went with the option that was proposed by the Development Office based on, we asked, what what can we do here with the work?
Yep. And and R18 says you can do nine.
R18 is is what we can do.
And you decided right now eight? And then there were some questions that were brought up about, okay, you plan on having this for 55 and older, do you, are you guaranteeing, and we kind of figured that out, that you can do with a deed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe the overlay allows us to do that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, I, we targeted one, one opportunity, and if that doesn't work, I guess you'll get another of my $400, and I'll be back here with something else if you give me a down vote. If you come back with another option, and and then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll certainly entertain that.
Okay.
Well, what I would say is, whether it's a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation, you can go to the city, you whatever the vote is, you could, you get to go to the city council and and hear what they have to say. Ultimately, their vote is what matters, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same with the, your neighbors here.
And and I think, to address your concern, we And I think, to address your concern, we, we got together as a family and said, you know, most of the people that this affects bought land from the Johnsons, so they should be supported with this.
Hold on, hold on, please, please.
And so, that was why-
Yeah, I know, I, I know where you're going with that, yeah.
I have a website, and I have things ready to go, and I go out and talk to them. And, you know, none of these people have approached us, they've seen the notices. And so, I, I think that, you know, that was just the opportunity, that was the decision that we made, based on the situation that we were in. Had I known that this would be the response, I would have done things differently.
Yeah. Okay. You know, like I said, it's spirit of the law versus letter of the law, and that's usually- Any other commissioners, you have any other questions? Okay. David, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, what's the next step?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the rezone of the, by B-build, proposed by B-builders for 602 South Angel Street, from A1 Light Agricultural District to an R-18 Single Family Residential District, with the PRUD Planned Unit Residential Overlay.
I'll second.
Okay, voting comes to me. Aye?
Nay. I'm going to vote aye, and I just want to explain that I think, for all of the reasons that I talked about, I, I don't have a problem with the proposal as it stands. But again, I do have a concern about housing affordability, and I don't, the proposal as it's given, is not really that affordable. And so, I, I could be open to compromise, to something, you know, other than this, but given that this being the motion, I will vote in favor of it. Aye.
Aye. I'm going to vote nay, and let me just briefly say, I think this is ripe for a compromise. I would vote in favor if it were R-110, which I think would essentially get, probably practically speaking, would get six lots. I think that is essentially six quarter-acre lots, and that seems a little closer to some of the adjacent properties, if you look half a mile out, so, nay.
Okay.
I would give the same rationale, thank you, Josh.
I vote aye, and I have the same rationale as Wilf.
Okay, so- I'm just gathering my thoughts here. So, obviously, the next step is, this will go up to the city council, do we know approximately-
So, this motion passed four to two, correct?
Yes, four to two, that is correct.
Yeah, we'll get it on one of the next city council meeting agendas, which more than likely would be June 2nd.
Okay, so, June 2nd. Obviously, there will be plenty of notice, this being on there. Any advice that we can give to both sides? Start off with you, Josh.
I, I think I've said enough on both sides. Yeah, I mean, it really, talk to the council, sharpen your pencil, and come and make the arguments to the council.
True. Steve?
Okay.
Cody?
Nothing additional. I think I said too much.
Never. Toby?
I mean, I would just offer this, I lived in that property that Wilf, by that property that Wilf mentioned, there were all the same concerns were there, traffic, higher density, it was going from a lot, it was like two acres, they had three homes on the frontage, it went to 28 townhomes. I'm in an R-18 zone, so I live in the zone that is being proposed for this, this change.
Me too.
The, all the concerns that people had were never realized. That there's not a traffic issue, there's not a safety issue, the people that live there are good Kaysville residents, and they're good neighbors. So, I really feel like that that's going to be the situation here, too. So, I mean, I think that maybe just, I think that when we go through these kind of things, I mean, we ask the applicant to meet with the neighbors, and the neighbors feel like that they have some say in this. But in the reality, they, they don't. I mean, the applicant could listen to them, but whenever I've gone through these things, the, I mean, hopefully the applicant, or the homeowners around there would be open to listening, what this is going to be like, but ultimately, I don't know that they'll necessarily change their mind. And so, I think it's, that's where, there'll just have to be an up-and-down vote by the city council, if they support this or not. I don't know that the, I mean, it'll just take time for people to realize that, you know, it really is not that big of a fact.
I, I, I beg to differ, Toby, obviously, you and I have worked, and I have the utmost respect for you, but I do believe that, in essence, they do have a say between now and then, I mean, you know, the neighbors could really change the minds of the city council, so I-
Yeah, they could talk to them, for sure. But I'm seeing like the, if they, if the, if the applicant decides to stay the same proposal, they just have to go to the vote, right? I mean, at that point, and they, the owners around there will just feel the same way. I don't know, I mean, they could ask them to change, and that's fine, that's in their prerogative to do that. And that's fine.
So, I, my last thoughts on this, I'm looking at all the notes, all the things that were brought up. The interesting thing that was brought up was the loss of agriculture, having just come back from Ukraine, I, I get it, it's kind of weird, it's emotional, so I don't want to talk too much about it, but the loss of agriculture, it's an interesting topic, I don't know if it's within our purview to discuss it, but that's been at the top of my mind ever since that was brought up. I didn't think it would bring it up, I've done a lot of research on this, but something to think about. So, advice to both sides, June 2nd, your elected officials, one of them's sitting right there, feel free to address them, and make your case to the applicant. I, I highly advise taking a look at some of the other meetings, with some of the other proposals that have come up, whether they've gone positive or negative, but engage with your neighbors. Again, that's more the spirit of the law than anything else. And with that, I'm going to close that up. And next agenda item is, call to, call to the public, at this point, anybody can say anything, so does anybody have any comments?
Thirty seconds, I'm still-
Come on up. Again, please state your name.
Brett Markham. Again, I realize the vote's been taken and everything, the one thing I just really hope people remember is, I agree, like, with what Josh said, where the impact of this particular project is probably somewhat minimal. There may be some, you know, there, again, I don't, there's probably a few things here, there's a few things there, and I get that's where a lot of us are coming from, but I think that you are forgetting that, the precedent again, like, the other big, the big green spaces are within, like, they're right there, you can see them, they're on Angel Street.
Not on Angel Street.
They're right next to it. It's, it's in between. There's a big, there's, the Saunders property would fit 113 homes, and that's right around from this property. There's another one that's immediately east. So, if you, I mean, if this goes through, again, you're, I, like Josh said, there was a meeting long ago where it was going from this to that. Okay, so, in six months, is there another meeting just like this, where someone's saying, "You did it for him, why aren't you doing that for me?" And I want to put in 300, 200, I don't know how many could fit, between the two different green spaces. This is maybe, unfortunately for the Johnsons, maybe less about this, it's a lot more about all of a sudden, it's a very different feeling, a very different scenario, traffic, all that would be dramatically impacted, I mean, it's very different if you set that standard.
Yep, no, I agree. Thank you. Anybody else, public comments?
I usually put things in layman terms. Don't arrest me. We're not assholes. We know that there are good people who are going to move into these places. That's not what we're arguing. We're arguing about what our community, where we live, what the feel of it is, what we want and what we don't want. I can tell you right now, their property is not agriculture. They ain't growing nothing on it, no offense, no offense. I know what agriculture is. We need to preserve that. And when we don't have respect for the land, then we lose a lot of stuff. This is not a war against the Johnsons and us, it's about preserving what is there, and finding a healthy balance for the people who are existing there. And please, will you please remember our children? Not one of you considered my child walking to school. Think of all those children that are walking to school. So, what if it's nine homes? I get it, if there's old people, no offense, they're probably not going to cause a lot of traffic, but what are you going to bring in after that? Because I guarantee you, it will be bigger, and more, and bigger, and more. And my babies need two sidewalks to walk on, and the Wintertons should not have to pay for it.
I won't debate with you, but I, I do think about everybody's children, it's public safety, something that I always think about, look at my voting record. As far as agriculture is concerned, you may not think their property's agriculture, having said that, I don't look at agriculture as, as black and white. I see agriculture being developed organically by people that own the land, they look at what's happening around them, they look at current events, and they say, "You know what? I'm going to grow things." And so, that's just my personal opinion. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I am there with Brett, and it's, it's the biggest issue here. He said, "This is not about precedent."
Sorry, excuse me, can you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm the voice from above, sorry.
My name is Natalie Morrison. So, he said, "This isn't about precedent, because the other properties aren't on a major arterial road." Yes, they are, they all are. So, the Saunders property is, is it two houses or three houses? It's just, it's on the same street. When Dick Saunders dies, same thing's going to happen, they're going to come before you and say the same thing. And they're going to say, "Look what you did for the Johnsons." It is on Angel Street, I lived there, so that's directly behind my house. Seven houses down is also a property on Angel Street and Web Lane, open, wide open, there's two, and they're all right in our neighborhood. So, that's what this is about for us, and what he said is wrong. He doesn't know what he's talking about. We do, we live there. So, you're opening a major, huge floodgate. It's massively huge for us. We live in this area where there's all this open space, and the last few open spaces that are left are right on Angel, and they're right by us. That's our neighborhood. So, you do this on the Johnsons property, it's going to happen on the Saunders property, and it's going to happen right on Angel Street and Web Lane. That is all in such a tiny area. I went from living in DeKaysville to Manhattan, I mean, it's just, it's huge. And I think before, the next time one of these comes up, it should be requirement that you all drive by. Thank you for driving by and looking at it, those of you that did. You need to all drive by and look at it, because it's, it's big.
We usually do, just to let you know, a lot of us, obviously, live here, and even though we know the area, we'll still drive by a couple times. Thank you.
Justin Taylor, and I'm just really afraid that I heard somebody on this panel say tonight, that they have no problem with the remaining 300 acres in Kaysville being high-density housing. That is scary to me.
I did not say that. I said that if all, I said if it were all developed, as three, all 300 acres were developed as high-density, it wouldn't be a huge impact on the community, but I did not say that I favored all 300 acres of it being developed that way.
Yeah, and I'd ultimately say, I did take offense that you were talking about R-18, and that was not part of Kaysville, because I do live in an R-18 zone, and I live in
Okay, moving on.
So, I just wanted to address precedent. 150 feet west of this home, there are twin homes that were developed, and were approved already, and are of a similar size, if not smaller, than what we are suggesting, and what we are proposing. So, you know, we looked at that as an ample precedent within 150 feet of the property.
Thank you.
All I have to say is-
Your name, real quick.
Erica Townsend. If you can't keep your own rules, everybody's going to come and want to break them. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
You have to keep your own rules, that you guys make.
Okay. Ma'am?
What rules are you referring to?
I'm happy to answer. Um, this is my first time, one of these kind of meetings. Like I said, I've lived here a long time. These kinds of meetings happen, and they will continue to happen. And, like I said, I voted for five-acre lots. Didn't happen. I voted for my father's 20 acres not to be developed, but we didn't have money to buy up my brothers and sisters, so there's not so much there. I sure didn't want Joe Hill's, whatever. But it happened. And I, and it breaks my heart for you guys, because I've been there. Every time it happens, I have cried. It just hurts, it really hurts to see a whole field of angels or herford cattle gone in the development, all around Vernon Field, houses, place I used to ride my horses, gone, can't ride. Can't ride down the road on Angel Street with the ditch on each side, and the tractor's coming, and Vernon and Stan, and everybody else stopping so my horse doesn't throw a pit. It's gone. Sidewalks, ditches, filled in. The development above us, which is the Ovation Homes, we didn't want it, we were just fine with the horses in that pasture. The ditch that comes down across our land, that waters our horses, that we water our acreage with, the city made us pipe it up last year, two years ago. We didn't want it, but you have to just deal with it, find the good in it, like in those Ovation Homes above us, those people are angels. There's no crime there, there's not a million cars there, there's two people per house, except for the ones who are widows, and they are good, upstanding people. They don't have a bunch of kids and their friends coming and going, it's a good place. And I, I understand those compromises. If you put in four houses, four big houses with six kids and their friends and their cars-
Yes, it's for-
I know, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything for your roads, for your school, your school, it's that one. Anyway, I'm not to argue with four houses.
Hey, folks, in interest of time-
I'm not to argue, I'm just saying, I'm sorry for you, but it hasn't, and you do need to make the best of it, like I have all my life. West Kaysville's turned into a good place, definitely not what I wanted, and I moved 40 years ago, but it wasn't possible. But that's, that's how it is, make the most of it. Compromise a little bit is fine, but doesn't sound like a law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public, and I'm going to move to number six, reports, correspondences and calendar.
Breaking news, I have the final draft of the general plan. I haven't even opened the email, but it finally came through today. So, we plan to disseminate that out to the city council, and we're leaning towards having another joint meeting between the planning commission and the council to go over that. It's now about 90 pages, whereas before it was 170, I think, so, the content, for the most part, has not, I shouldn't say that, the content has not been changed at all. We have extracted the public works, or, excuse me, the parks, an open space plan as its own, there still is an element of that left in the plan, but it's definitely a lot more focused and, I think, better organized. So, we will, we will get that out, and look towards having, I think, a joint meeting probably in June.
Okay.
Can I make a quick comment on that? Come on.
Yeah.
This is, this is part of the problem, okay, with this meeting right here. People come, now, there's some that have left, half the room is gone, people come, they make their point, and they leave. And here we are, talking about the general plan, that's going, that we are going to look at, when the property on Web- when the property on Web Lane and Angel develops in a year, five years, whatever. And that general plan is going to dictate what our decision should be. And everybody leaves. So that's frustrating to me.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to have your voice heard, don't come, don't be a NIMBY, not in my backyard. Come when it matters and give your voice heard when the general plan is being made. We all sit up here and, and go through the process importantly. And I think, I wish more citizens were involved. That's why we all tried to get more citizen input.
Yep, we did.
That's where the citizen input matters. It matters today, tonight, in this instance, and it matters in that instance, but people don't show up for that. That's frustrating.
Totally agree, totally agree. I agree with you. So again, joint, figured about a joint meeting sometime in June, do we have an idea?
The first meeting in June would be the June 2nd.
Right, for the city council.
Then 16th.
But, but we'll look at, yeah, we could do the 16th too, we can look at-
Would it be on a regular council night, you think, or do you think it would be a special meeting?
To be determined, maybe we'll send out an email and see what-
Is there dinner provided?
Sorry, what?
Food provided?
No, what?
Food provided, that's important. Because I'll show up, I'm kidding, I'll be there anyways.
I, I think we could arrange that, yes.
Trying to bring some light here.
But I, I think, I think we would want to do that with, with the current commission. We have three of you possibly-
Correct.
We know at least one is not renewing a term. So we, I think we'd want to get that done before the end of those terms on June 30th. So we'll, we'll talk with the mayor and see what the best approach is on that.
What would you say between now and then? Or can we agree, maybe on some homework for us? Between now and, I mean, you're going to send out the email and then we're going to have a joint meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll send out the, the plan so that there's adequate time for you to look at it and review it. Like I said, the content hasn't changed. We've reformatted the document, we've reorganized things and we have extracted some things which I think just weren't germane to what our task is as far as, you know, planning and zoning and, and community development. Not to say that parks and open space isn't germane, but it's not really part of our role with community development. So I, I, I think you'll find that it's easier to read, it flows better. I think even just shifting the document from landscape to portrait shortened it up quite a bit. So some information that was plugged into the chapters has been added to the appendices. So it just flows a lot better. So.
Great.
So we'll, we'll coordinate with some dates and a time on that.
And on that draft, are we putting it out to the public at all or?
We'll have it put out with the packet.
Okay.
It's time to discuss that when the meeting data sets. So I, I don't believe we were anticipating on doing another public hearing because again-
Oh, no, 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 not, not, not a public hearing, but at least just getting it out, what the latest draft is. I think we've always been transparent about that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have it with the packet and-
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that out publicly as soon as we can. We also, Wolf has, it's come to his attention and then mine, that we need to look at amending our appeals process of our ordinance to be in compliance with state law and to improve that. So I've pulled, I went back to kind of what I know, I've pulled Murray's. Wolf said that Salt Lake City had a good appeal process. So we'll maybe look at a couple other examples from some cities and see what they do and work towards bringing a draft to the group.
Okay.
It needs work out to-
Yeah, we also want to get that explosives ordinance back in front of, I know it's like Juan left for-
I know, I thought that would have been taken care of, oh my gosh.
Yeah, so we'll get that back on.
Yes, you guys were waiting for me, thanks.
We'll get that back on as well. And then we did have a number of applications, I think like seven applications received for the planning commission vacancies. And so interviews have been set up, I think, yeah, for next week with the mayor and I to, to-
Nice.
Interview those candidates that are interested in either serving another term or filling a vacancy.
When's my vote coming up?
So your, your term would end June 30th.
Right, and then when does the planning commission vote on the next chair?
Oh, well, the first meeting in July. So the 8th?
Okay.
Oh, okay, sorry, what is that? Yeah, so the 14th of July, the 14th and the 28th are the dates in July for planning commission. So it would be, it would be on the-
14th.
14th.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And that, that was all I had unless there's anything else the commission wants to talk about. I, I would also like to maybe just have a workshop session with the planning commission to discuss some of my thoughts about staff reports and some of the, I think, changes that I would like to see as far as recommendations. And we've already changed a little bit, the format of the reports and I think the content and detail that we're providing to you. Want to make sure that you have what you need as the commission to do your job. I, I feel that providing a staff recommendation is something that is in line, but that's something that has not traditionally been done, at least on rezones here in Decaysville. So I've kind of tried to steer away from that a little bit, but I think that's something that would be reasonable to do. Also maybe want to look at changing some of the policies and procedures that the planning commission has. And I'm just going to say this right now, but I don't see any reason why the planning commission should have a call to the public on their agenda. I see absolutely reasons why the city council should, but in my opinion, you're an appointed body here to hear the applications and decide on the applications that are brought forward. And I just don't see a point to have a, a citizen comment above and beyond the public hearings that are germane to the applications that you're tasked with.
Oh, you're talking about this just general call to the public?
Yes, this number five call to the public. I, I don't, I have not seen that in any other planning commission or city, county that I've been involved in. I thought that was strange from day one. And I mean, I think the, the process that we saw tonight here at the end, it just gives somebody, or citizens, another shot to come up and express their anger towards a decision or a recommendation that you're sending forward. Where city council, they're elected, they are to drive legislative policy, they are to hear about things that they would bring forward to the executive branch. It's just really not the role of the planning commission. There's a few other things, I think, with the policies and procedures that we could look at updating. So I don't know what the commission's thought is on that, but I just don't see a purpose in having that on there. Our policies and procedures for the planning commission states that these will be our agenda items and it lists that in there. So if that is something the commission would agree with, we would need to amend that and take that off.
I, I think for me, I mean, just my personal opinion, you know, the call to the public, I, I don't have a problem with that as heated as it may be, as much as, you know, I want to go home, it's 9:39, but I get it, I mean, I'm up here to do a task, it's not the easiest. You know, I'm not running for reelection, I'm not just saying that, but it's, yeah, it's, I mean, I look at my progression, I think about council member Barbara, this is something that she also agreed with, which is, you know, when we first get on the public commission, we're not too sure what to expect unless, you know, you've been following it fervently. And then the issues that get brought up time and time over again, you know, there are some times where you think, oh my gosh. Traffic, this, that, haven't we talked about it? But I also think that it's our duty, if, at least that's my opinion. I, I don't know if the rest of the, the commission previous agree with me. I, I don't have an issue with that and then obviously any time I can put a stop to it, time wise. Yeah, it's, but, but I do, I do note this, that the comments I've taken to heart, I listen to them. Sometimes they, at least for me, it, again, it's not the letter of the law, it's a spirit of the law. So I, I try to go with both. I mean, I know that they're, at least, that's at least what I do. There's always going to be a letter of the law, you know, we explain that, yes, sometimes we don't have a choice. But if everything meets in line, that's why sometimes we do, you know, some of these procedures. We give it back to you, the staff, and just say, hey, if it meets the checkboxes, go ahead, don't even bring it up to us. I mean, at least that's my opinion and, you know, I'll let the, I don't know if you guys want to talk about that now or later or?
Well, to your point, really, they have, that's the opportunity for the public hearing, right? So you're just clarifying that we don't need the, and I agree.
If the commission is taking public comment on every item, which you did ask if there was public comment on IDK, we are not required by law to hold a public hearing.
Right, I understand.
Other items, we are required by law to hold a public hearing. You get emails, you read your emails, I've read all the emails. They come, they give their opinion, we listen to that. And I think having a third shot just really doesn't serve the process that you are tasked to move forward with. It just doesn't serve that process. So if there was, you know, even if it was at the beginning of the agenda and it was, hey, if you're not here for an item that has a public hearing, if you're here for these other items, I could understand that. But I just don't see a good cause or a purpose for having that on there. And I can, you know, bring that recommendation to the commission and you can debate. And at the end of the day, this is your meeting and if you feel all strongly that it needs to be left on there, then we'll leave it on there. But I, I don't see really what purpose it serves to have another opportunity when we've already had the opportunity of the various agenda items in the process.
You know, I just will say to Melinda's point, in all the years I've been doing this, I, there are not a lot of planning commissions that I've seen that have a call to the public item on their agendas. Councils, yes.
Yes, councils, yes.
But not planning commissions for the very reasons that Melinda was just describing.
And I mean, if you also look at the totality of it, I mean, how often do we have this kind of an exchange? It's very rare. It's usually these highly emotional items. Having said that, it could be that that's all we're going to have moving forward because as we've stated, there's really, you know, the only rezones that are going to come up like this, I-
Well, you're going to have at least one more, the next meeting.
Land re, land reuse is the word of the day.
41 West, 100 South.
Oh, yeah.
2RM, yes, that is one more thing. So those of you who weren't able to attend the planning commission training that Wolf and John Call put together, we have books that are updated from the last edition. So if you weren't able to attend, please take one of the, the books and-
You can get Wolf to sign it.
Really, I would love that, yes. I'm going to resell on eBay.
I'm not an author. I just, I just helped read and edit it, that's-
Just a couple other items, just a couple other items for the commission. The Main Street program or the Main Street project, we're working towards setting a date to have discussion about that. And, and like I said, we'll, we'll determine with the, with the council and the mayor, when a good date for the, now that we have that final draft, when a good date for the general plan will be. So that's all I have.
Okay.
A small suggestion, you don't need to do the call like you're talking about, but it might be helpful if you give an opportunity to allow us to ask questions. Based on your decision, there might be some questions.
Oh, follow up, I see what you're saying, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we, we, by the way, we have a Facebook page where we explain a lot of that. We've taken a lot of time, so please visit the Facebook page, give us a like on the, the, I mean, you're, you're, she actually did a lot of it too, by the way. You'll see her on a lot of those issues explaining, just throwing it out there. I know, I'm just kidding. Yeah.
Well, our office is open five days a week. So if anyone ever has a question about the process, you're more than welcome to come in to call. That's why we're here. It's part of the reason why it took a few minutes during the presentation to explain the process, to explain the planning commission's role and what the city council will do. So I, I greatly appreciate the public's participation. We greatly appreciate when they come to us to ask questions so that they can understand. It will also say that it is a very complex, land use is very, very complex. And, and those of us who have done this for many, many years in our career, still don't understand it sometimes. And then right when we just start to understand it, the state legislature changes everything. And we have to start to understand, I mean, today I was reading 36 pages of annexation code. I've not been through an annexation process. So it's, it's a very, very-
Wait, are we looking to annex somebody?
It's a very complicated scenario.
It's a mess.
And, and then you have state law, then you have case law, you have, there's all these scenarios. And most of the time, I, I mean, I'm very happy to spend time with the public to help them understand, to answer their questions. That's why we're here. So please come, you know, and, and we can help you understand why it may look like we're not following our rules or what the process looks like, so.
Well, I think that's why-
I don't even know our main line, but what's our main line, Mindy? You can call our office.
867-5309. I'm just kidding.
546-1241. Am I right? 546-1241.
Well, I think, I mean, we, we've tried to be transparent and I think from a while back, we've seen that this process is complex. That's why we have done those videos and we'll continue doing that. And I think that's why, yeah, it's, we, we do our best.
Yeah, and, and the problem is that so many times inaccurate information. Like one of the emails came through and it says, I'm opposed to multifamily in this.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And no multifamily has been proposed. So, you know, it's always, it's great to come to the source. That's our role is to provide information, to provide data. And, and then let the planning commission and the city council debate and decide.
Are we getting an annexation?
Yes, we are.
Skip over that.
Don't ask, don't ask.
We are. So, yes, we-
East and West were stymachic.
We have received an application, actually the application came in when we were down in Kanab. We've been through the first round of the process and so the city council did accept the annexation application. At the next council meeting, we will certify that petition. It's for about 1.4 acres of a total of 16 acres of property that LPM Corporation owns, commonly probably referred to as the Kingston, the Kingston property of Fontaine Hollow. At the end of Oxford Drive, where the King Clarion subdivision. So they're wanting to just annex a small portion in to have-
I live on Oxford Drive.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so they want to have-
Somebody said they'd heard something about it.
Availability to have two more developable lots at the end of that subdivision, so.
And Jeff Euler brings a sigh of relief.
I think he does. Yep. But that's, you know, the planning commission, your role was completed because you recommended the annexation policy to the city council. So that won't come to the planning commission at all. You're off the hook for that, that'll just be, that'll just be staff in the city council.
So I got Jeff Euler, got me appointed to the county local boundary commission. So if anybody disputes the annexation, I'll get it.
Oh, okay, well.
It's a mess, our state annexation code is a mess.
I'm telling you, six times through it today, I think I'm finally understanding it. And it's hard when you've never been through the process yourself.
If you are, if you're understanding it, you will be a miracle.
That's when you phone your friends and call your cities that have done it.
That's when they call and take you down to the state owned Budsmann's office.
Okay, anything else? Do I have?
Motion to adjourn. So mad.
Yes, gavel used.
What comes-